It's 6:30. I'm gonna go ahead and call the November 13th, 2025 Versailles Midway Woodford County Planning Commission Meeting to Order. If you would please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kim, would you do the roll call, please?
Randall Bohannon.
Here.
Rich Shine.
Tim Middleton.
Here.
Patty Perry.
Here.
Chad Wells.
Here.
Chris Sharp.
Here.
Whitney Stapp.
Here.
Doug Curl.
Here.
Floyd Green.
Here.
Thank you, Kim. The minutes from the October 9th meeting were in your pocket. If you've had a chance to look at those, if there's not any corrections or notes to be put on there, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the minutes of the October 9th, 2025 meeting.
May I have a motion to approve? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We have three items under the non-public hearing section tonight. The first item is the Woodford County Fire Protection District has applied for an approval of a subdivision. It's a consul- con- cons- consolidation plat on tracts of land containing 0.855 acres, and that's located at 61 and 107 Big Sink Road here in Versailles. And the property is zoned a single-family R1C. Mr. Hunter?
Kim, Kim, Kim O'Reilly's gonna do the plat tonight.
Oh, okay.
Call the Karen. Sorry about that.
Hey, the fire, uh, district acquired 107 Big Sink, and they wanted to consolidate their other two lots to that. So that's what they're doing is consolidating three lots on Big Sink to make one large one. It went through TRC and all the, there were no deficiencies, so it's in order for your approval.
Anyone have any questions or concerns on this project? Anyone prepared to take action?
I'll move that the application for consolidation of tracts containing land located at 61 and 107 Big Sink Road filed by Woodford County Fire Protection- Protection District be approved.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the consolidation plat. Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The second item on the agenda is Robert and Sheila Wade have applied for an approval of a subdivision. It's also a consolidation plat on tracts of land containing 16.8 acres that is located at 5088 Delaney Ferry Road in Versailles. And the property is zoned agriculture, A1 and A2. Kim?
Okay, um, this is, one tract is a little over six acres and the other one's a little over 10 acres. So they are consolidating these to create the 16.8 acre tract. There is a house on, on one of the tracts and all the deficiencies were met and it went through TRC and it's ready for your approval.
Okay. Any questions or concerns on this particular item? Anyone prepared to take action?
I'll move that we approve this subdivision consolidation plat on land, 16.8 acres located by 88 Delaney Ferry Roads.
Have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item is 2001 Lexington Road LLC has applied for an approval of a subdivision. It's a minor plat on tracts of land containing 120.37 acres, and that's located at 1851 and 2001 Lexington Road here in Versailles. The property is zoned single-family residential, R1A, R1B, and R1C, and two-family residential. Kim?
Okay, Steve has put the zoning map and aerial photo up on the monitor for this plat. They are dividing off a little less than 39, or, or, little less than 40 acres as a non-building tract at the moment so that it can be sold. It, it is already zoned. They have corrected all of their deficiencies as well, and actually the address for this is 462 Abingdon Avenue. It's no longer Lexington Road. But that was one of their deficiencies.
I'll just add in there, Kim did a good job on that, but you know, kind of big picture. This, what we call the Payne's Crossing development, Unit 1 is down in the south. The middle portion is Unit 2 from the original preliminary development plan, and then Unit 3 is up along US 60. Of course Ball Homes is working down in, in Unit 1 right now and has the lots that you see there, about 130-some lots of 200 under construction, and this developer is buying the next sex- they're buying a portion of Unit 2. It kind of comes out really to that triangular piece right there. So, uh, the developer's buying that to go on and do another phase, so then Unit 2's kind of being broke into two pieces at, for the time being, and then Unit 1's still intact. The entire development's approved for 518 homes, was zoned years and years and years ago, and is now under construction.
Can somebody speak into the microphone?
I don't think it changes in here much, does it?
No, it doesn't.
That's, that's how loud it is.
We, we get too much-
Does it have a microphone?
He does.
Yeah, well, yeah, well-
We, we get too much feedback if we turn it up too loud.
Yeah.
Or in here, so.
Well, we'll speak louder. So again, that, that's, that's what we're doing here. This is a minor plat because we're just subdividing the 120-acre remainder into a 40 and an 80 at this time, and then there's already construction plans filed for the entire project. So it's, it's just a matter of a transfer in a portion of Unit 2.
To a different developer?
Uh, I don't have details on who the developer is at this time.
But it's a different one, though. It's not-
It's not Ball Homes?
It's not Ball Homes.
Do we know if it's them? I don't know. I don't know who the buyer is. Do we have, I don't-
It says the owner of record is in Florida.
Yeah, the, the owner of all the property that's not Ball Homes lives in Florida. And it's being divided, I think, for its future sale to a developer to continue the development. So the development's gonna continue from the south towards the north.
Can you repeat the number of units?
518 was approved with the zone change. It was done-
Yeah, repeat when it was done, a long, long time?
I don't, 20 years ago.
That was years ago.
20 years ago.
Yes.
Just making it clear.
Exactly, it's a long, long time.
Yeah.
Meaning this is really administrative because the units have already been approved and-
Years ago.
Zone change has already occurred.
Yeah, years ago. And there's, and if you, again, the aerial's a little dated. We've got new aerials coming to us pretty soon. But there's, the first phase, this was like 50-some lots. The second phase, the roads are now built for close to 80 lots. If you've gone back there off Granger, almost all the entire first phase construction is done. The homes are built and there's families living in there. Ultimately, this section is 200 homes right here. It's currently under construction, and again, we're at about the 130 mark, something like that, of the 518. It's busy back there if you haven't been back there.
Any other questions or concerns from the commissioners? Hearing none. Is anyone prepared to take action? I'm, you, this is a non-public hearing, I'm sorry.
It really wasn't a question. Somebody was just asking where this is located.
Payne's Crossing. Next to Glen Eagle.
So that's, that's US 60 up there on the north. That's the Parkway on the south. Granger Street goes back there and dead ends into the subdivision. I don't even actually know all the names of the streets back in there, but you gotta meander kind of into the subdivision either from Paddock, Huntertown Road. You get back there, but you get back in the back section. That's Granger Street that goes into the main, uh-
This is Glen Eagle, right here.
In Glen Eagle's subdivision.
And so this is the tract.
East side of Versailles.
I will move for the approval of this subdivision mine plat on this tract of land containing 120.370 acres. But before I continue my motion, the address is changed to-
462 Abingdon Avenue.
Abington?
Abingdon.
Abington.
Abington.
At 462 Abingdon Avenue.
One second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. We have two items under public hearing this evening. The first item is Tony and Natalie Bays have filed for an application to rezone a tract of land containing 0.456 acres, and that's located at 341 Winter Street in Midway. The requested zone change is from two-family residential R2 to medium-density residential R3. And I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. Steve?
Thank you. So, oh, better get my book open here, so I can have my staff report. So the aerial's up on the screen that you can see. There's North Winter Street. You see the 341 right in the middle. First street's there to the western side of the property. This is, this is a shot of the, the property that faces North Winter. There's a house there that the applicant's plan here is, is to zone from R2 to R3, demo this house, and construct new single-family dwellings on this property. This is a shot from First Street looking back up towards the house there. So that, if you go back to the aerial and look, you can see we have, this property has one house on a lot that goes all the way from North Winter to First. The property to the south also goes from North Winter to First, but has a garage and a house. The property to the north, you can see, are two homes that front both roads. We had a zone change recently south of here, as you all remember, another where there were two lots that front each one of these roads, and there was a zone change to R3, R2 to R3, to be able to move the lot line, because the R2 zoning requires such a big lot size. The, the need is to go to R3 to be able to move these lot lines and reconfigure these, these older lots. So again, this is the shot off North Winter. This is a shot off First Street. This is First Street. Just wanted to give the planning commission perspective. It is a narrow road. It almost feels and functions like an alley, but it is a city street, and there are several houses that front this street on both sides as you head down to the south. And again, this is a zoning map that shows what we have happening in this part of Midway. This, the west side of North Winter Street is pretty much exclusively R2, and as you know, the R2 zone is, allows single-family or duplexes. However, there's very few duplexes in this zone. The R2 was utilized years ago to be able to create smaller lots, but they're obviously can't be as small as the R3. As we get east of North Winter Street, we, we transition to bigger, single-family R1A lots, which have a 12,000 square foot minimum. The R2 has to be 12,000 square foot if you do a duplex, 8,000 square foot if you do a single-family dwelling, and what the applicants are proposing, this, well, before I get there, this is a zoomed-out shot, shot a little further, and again, you see the property that we recently zoned down there at First in North Winter. It's not been changed yet because the zoning just took effect on November 9th. So that property was zoned from R2 to R3, very similar, and then you can kind of see how these lots kind of, some of them front both roads. You get between First and Second Street, we got, again, we got small lots that split down the middle, split east side, west side, that kind of thing. I'm gonna get into the staff report. We'll come back, but I want to get to the plan real quick and then we'll jump backwards. This is what the applicant's proposing, basically to rezone the property from R2 to R3 to be able to create three single-family building lots. So with that, I'm gonna back up and get back on the staff report and a little more procedurally here. On page one of your staff report, again, you have some just basic details. Property's at 341 North Winter. Again, the current zoning's R2. They're proposing R3. The property's .456 acres, so just a little bit under a half acre, and the area's mostly, uh, single-family uses. We'll talk about this in more detail in a second, but the, from the land use designation, our comprehensive plan, this is in the traditional neighborhood district. This is the land use map for Midway, and the TND's up there kind of towards the top, and as you zoom in, you can see North Winter Street is a split between traditional neighborhood district and contemporary neighborhood district. Those are different in the comprehensive plan and have kind of different general descriptions, but both allow single-family use, multi-family use. They're residential districts by default. Traditional neighborhood districts are typically areas that were built before 1968, and CNDs are post-1968. So with that, we get into page 2, 3, 4 of your staff report. We get into our comprehensive plan, specifically the goals and objectives in the comprehensive plan that we look at on every zone change request. You get to page 5, the staff report, and we're looking at chapter 5 where this map is, uh, is a reference in the land use chapter. This is an appendices to the comp plan. This figure 24, which is the, the citywide land use map, but the land use chapter's in chapter 5, and as you know, on pages 5 and 6, we have 11 what's called area-wide policies that have to be complied with on a zone change, uh, any zone change in our community. Everyone has to comply with the area-wide policies. You turn to page 6, and again, this is where we get into that TND description in the comprehensive plan. I'm gonna read part of that because it is interesting. It says, "This land use district is intended for existing neighborhoods constructed prior to 1968. In part, these neighborhoods have unique development pattern characterized by grid pattern of streets, houses located close to the street, and a mix of housing types. Generally, these neighborhoods would develop at higher overall density than contemporary neighborhoods." And you can see that right there by the lot sizes in general. So that, that's generally what the TND district is. Page of 7 of your staff report, we get into the specific TND policies related to general development and infrastructure development. Get to page 8 of the staff report, and we're into the zoning ordinance verbiage. The first section on page 8 is section 409.3, which deals with the application requirements. Page 9 of the staff report, you see right at the top, Item B, our development plan requirement in general terms. You get to the bottom of page 9, and section 4, 10.1 is the purpose and intent of a development plan, and those things are outlined on the bottom of page 9, top of page 10. Page 10 in the middle, section 4, 10.2 is our general development plan requirement, and Item A says, "A general development plan shall be filed with the application for amendment to the official zoning map in a form recorded in the Woodford County Courthouse." So again, every single zone change has to have a general development plan, and the exhibit that's up on the screen is the exhibit the applicant submitted for their general development plan. On a small rezoning of this nature that's typically residential, this is basically a preliminary plat. This, this isn't the official plat, but it, that's about all you can show on a zone change of this nature is what the proposed lot layout would be and the number of potential residential lots. But this is a general development plan that becomes a condition of the zone change if approved. If this zone change was approved, a plat would have to come back to the planning commission later to actually create those lots. Bottom of page 10, section 4, 10.3 is the elements of a general development plan, and as you know, those items A through J have to be, you can do, include all of those or any of those, and basically, this development plan complies with that requirement. Page 11, again, is this development plan in the staff report, and when you get to the bottom of page 11, and we get to page 12, 13, we're into the R3 zoning district standards, and I want to point out at the top of page 12 that the principal uses in an R3 zone are single-family dwellings, townhomes, dormitories for school, childcare centers, and of course, multi-family dwellings, duplexes, and twin homes. The conditional use permits are interesting. There was a couple of questions that came from some neighbors. What else could someone do if they zoned R3? The conditional uses of various nature is kind of listed there in the middle. Obviously, bed and breakfasts and short-term rentals, which are kind of a hot topic, are something that somebody could do if your property was zoned R3 with an additional approval through the Board of Adjustments. The big thing is then on page 12 there, the minimum lot size, you can see highlighted in yellow, 6,000 square foot is the minimum lot size in the R3 zone, whether you're doing single-family or multi-family. Had the property owner left this R2, and you do single-family, the minimum lot size is 8,000. So if you kind of add up the square footages there, they got one lot that's being proposed at 7419, and the other two lots are exactly 6242. So there wasn't enough room to create three lots in the R2. By going to the R3 zone with a 6,000 square foot minimum, they're able to kind of conceptually lay out three building lots. And I won't go through anything else on the zoning. I'll be glad to answer your questions about that when we get there. Get to page 14 and 15 as we finish up this staff report. You've got other review items at the top, just general suggestions from the staff. The zoning ordinance findings, planning commission actions outlined on page 14, review criteria findings on 15. The findings required in the state law, KRS 10213 is outlined on page 15, and of course, we have cookie-cutter motions on page 17 to approve or deny, if you guys get to that point, to make a decision, and our attorney will be glad to assist the planning commission in wordsmithing a motion up or down if you guys get to that point. I know I rambled through that pretty quick, but I think we got maybe some folks here that want to talk about this case. I know the applicant's here, and there may even be some neighbors that want to ask some questions. I'll be glad to answer any questions the planning commission might have of me on, on this case, and go back through any of the exhibits if you all have any questions.
Any questions or concerns for Steve on this before the public comes to speak?
Yes, sir.
They actually could have gone to R1C except they're 20 feet short in the width. Is that it?
Hundred percent, yes.
Basically, that's it?
Yeah. And, and, and the, you know, the predominating zone there is R2, and then there's R1A, but yeah, R, R1C could have been utilized. There's no R1C in the general area. So, and there's also no R3, but there's, we've done a case recently, but the goal is to get three building lots in a particular zone for single-family developments. I will point out, the general development plan, you know, we've changed that term here recently in last year or so. The general development plan is the commitment of the applicant for what they're planning to do. For example, if some of the commission thought, hey, there should only be two lots, or we'd like to see the lots all be 7,000 square foot. That's what this document can have on it. It can have notes. It can have conditions. It can have commitments if it gets to that point. But at this point, that's what the applicant is submitting as their general development plan, and again, a plat would have to come to us later from a technical review to create the lots. There is a unique easement that kind of meanders through this property that might be a challenge to get this plat to work out down the road.
Anything else from the commissioners? Okay, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone that would like to speak on this particular item, feel free to come to the podium and, and give your name, and you have five minutes to speak.
The applicant wants to-
Okay, the applicant wants to speak.
The applicant was, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're fine. She raised her hand. It's the hallway.
Natalie, will you turn that on?
Turn your mic on.
Yeah.
There's a little button.
Thank you.
Is that better?
It's good.
Um, we are wanting to ask for a zone change from what we have to two lots that are 50 by 135 and one lot that's 65 by 100. When I was going through the comprehensive plan for Woodford County, it looked like we met quite a bit of the objectives on that. If you're looking at North Winter, to our immediate, our immediate right-hand neighbor is 70 by 90, and I'm getting this information from the Woodford County PVA website. So our immediate right-hand neighbor is 70 by 90. So our immediate right-hand neighbor is 70 by 90, and then if you go down the street on North Winter, we've got 315 North Winter, and that's 75 by 150. 319 North Winter is 60 by 120. So I feel like our 50 by 135 is not any different than those other lots. On First Street, we're asking for 65 by 100. Our immediate left-hand neighbor is 50 by 85. Across the street, 337 First Street is 60 by 95. 329 First Street is 60 by 155, and 325 First Street is 50 by 81. So I feel like we're in line with the rest of the neighborhood. We have, if we could keep the house and fix it, we would, but that house is in disrepair, so it's another, on the objectives of the comprehensive plan is to, um, help with deteriorating homes. So we're gonna remove that, that's our goal, and to build single-family residences on each lot. Two facing North Winter and one facing First Street, so... That is the goal. Thank you.
Ask your questions?
Yes.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, question. So I realize this is a preliminary plat, but are you anticipating if their driveway's on here, the two will come off later or will come off first?
Correct. We, um, with the size of the lot, we're looking for a smaller house for that, that reason.
Okay, anyone in the audience want to speak on this issue?
I can't speak, because I live right next to that lot. I don't want three houses chained in that little space.
Can you tell us your name first?
Robin Berry.
Okay.
339 North Winter.
You did receive correspondence from Colonel Petrie.
Yeah, there should be a letter.
I don't have anything to say, other than it seems like too much. I look at that lot, I know that lot, it's a lot to ask for, three homes on that piece of land. And there's a lot of houses being built and for sales, so you can take one away from that area. And just remember, it's Midway.
Anyone else?
Do you have some questions?
Okay, you want to come up? State your name, please.
Hi, my name is Isabella Shorolos. Um, I was just curious, so how big are the homes going to be that you plan to build?
Well, we're, we, this is the early stages, but no bigger, no wider than 24 to 27 feet wide. But we've got easements in the back for sewer lines, so we're trying to figure out what a depth that we can have, so that we can have parking in the back.
Mm-hmm. Will they be attached to one another?
Will the houses be attached? No, they're single-family.
Okay, so they'll be separate plots?
Yeah.
Do you know the square footage of the houses that you want to build?
No, not yet, because I've got to get the depth.
Okay.
And I can't get that until we find out on the easement for the sewer line, so this is just a preliminary area, I'll figure that out.
Okay. And this might be a question for the council, but does Woodford County have a minimum square footage for houses?
No.
No.
They do not?
We're not allowed to set those under the Fair Housing Act, we can't, architectural standards or minimum square footages. A developer could voluntarily commit to those things and put, incorporate them into their development plan, but the planning commission, uh, can't put those kind of things in, they'd be discriminatory in tone if we were to say, for example, the house has to be 4,000 square foot, or it has to be 1,000. Planning commissions can't do that.
Okay, so, and then just a clarifying question, so that I understand, this is my first meeting, so I've never been, I'm a new resident of Woodford County. If the sewer lines came back and heard depth came back, the easement, yes, thank you, and the house could be 600 square feet, that's something that could be built?
You can build a house any size, as long as you can meet the Kentucky Building Code.
Got it. That's all the questions I had, thank you.
Would you spell your last name?
Anyone else?
I have a question, if nobody...
If there's no one else, I'm gonna close the public hearing.
For the developer, I guess.
Whitney?
Is there any intention to apply for conditional use permit for short-term rentals or bed and breakfast?
No, we're not looking for that at all.
So the intention's to sell them or rent them out, but to provide housing?
Sell only.
Sell only? Okay, thank you.
Would you, would you, would you be willing to stipulate that in this, as Steve mentioned, in the papers?
Yeah.
So you'd make that a condition of this, there'd be no short-term rentals or bed and breakfast?
There was something out on Facebook that said something about STRs. That was your all's intention?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's what you all indicated to me all along, if these were going to be single-family detached units or sandalwood.
Any other commissioner have a question or a concern? Is anyone prepared to take action on this particular item?
Yeah, I'll take action. I move to approve the proposed zoning amendment, together with a condition upon the general development plans submitted by the applicant, and with the addition of, uh, restriction against short-term rentals.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the condition. Do I have a second?
A second.
The motion is a second. Any other discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair, if I might, to the move in seconds to find that this application conforms to the comp plan, notably those goals set out on Pages 3 through 7 of the staff reports, particularly about infill development being encouraged and with the depth of lots being similar to those around them.
Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a tabled item from several prior meetings. The for-sales Midway Woodford County Planning Commission has filed a zoning ordinance text amendment related to Articles 2 and 7 of the for-sales Midway Woodford County zoning ordinance. Steve, would you like to say something, please?
Shot of this.
Water.
Yeah, yeah. All right, yeah, let's, let's get rolling here, it looks like some folks might be stepping out, and if they do, there's people wanting to outside. Once come in, we might let them jump in here. Buddy. All right, so, a couple things to start with, um... So, a couple things. What I'm gonna do a little different tonight is, the PowerPoint that's on the screen was emailed out to all the planning commissioners. I had a meeting with a group of neighbors in the south part of the county on Tuesday night, and I prepared this PowerPoint for that meeting, and I thought it'd be a little more helpful tonight to go through this type of exhibit, that as you know, as we've been going through this text amendment since May, an advisory committee's been looking into this text amendment for two years. We've been going through the thing page by page in the underlying strike-through format, it, it's a really big document, there's a lot of stuff in there, so I thought I'd just do kind of a more, uh, light PowerPoint as we walk on through this, and, and I can just explain a few things. We've, we've got, we got through this at our September meeting through the ag district. As you all know, there's 20 zones in Chapter 7, and we've got changes across kind of every zone. We got through the ag zone, got through the in-family conveyance discussion, we made some changes, but they were not in print, so we tabled the meeting to come back so I could put them in print so you all could see them, um, and that's in this document. And then the other, what I'll call county-side zones, are exactly the same as the prior amendment. So what we need to do tonight is pick up with what I'll call the city-side zones, at least walk them through fairly quickly so they can get into the record, and then, um, explain what's in the text amendment. I'll be glad to answer your questions, and I believe there's some folks here who would like to speak on it. So with that, I'm gonna go through this first part of this handout at your seat fairly quickly. The first part is really just a little bit of background information on how we got here, because I knew there were several people that had called, and we thought it'd be helpful that everyone would understand how we got to this text amendment tonight, and how this two years has evolved to this point. I think there's some folks that think this just thing just landed here in the last month or two, but this has been in the works for a good two years. And as this planning commission knows, this started with our comprehensive plan update in 2023. We went out on the road, um, four, uh, days in the county to talk about the comprehensive plan, had listening sessions, um, and we walked through some exercises. When we were out at that meeting, as several planning commissioners remember, we heard a lot of stuff about in-family conveyances, rural lot cuts, low water pressure, development in for-sales, urban service, and we heard a lot of stuff at that comprehensive plan meeting. And then if you remember, after that, in September, we did a parcel analysis report at this planning commission here in September of '23. So over two years ago, we did a breakdown of what was going on out in the county after we heard all these things about how many lots we've been creating and houses we've been building, especially on county side. We had a report at this meeting. At that time, you guys remember, we looked at the map from 2016, we looked at the map from 2023, and we just clearly just looked at it and said, wow, we've created a couple hundred parcels here out in the county, and it was a little shocking, and we looked at the zones, and we looked at the sizes, and we just sort of drilled down on what has been going on, especially in the ag zone where we have a 30-acre minimum. How is it possible we're creating so many small lots out in the county? If you remember then, we zeroed in on the in-family conveyance verbiage, the sliding scale that lets people do, depending on the size of their lot, where they can do two cuts, four cuts, seven cuts, 10 cuts, or 15 cuts. We looked at all the cuts, one by one, and then we came back in October after that, and if you remember, we picked up the discussion, that's the agenda on the left, and then we actually made a motion to ask for a moratorium from the fiscal court. We asked for a moratorium on rural land division, why we could get through our comprehensive plan analysis. At the same time, the document you see there on the, the right two slides, our Agriculture Advisory Board, which is a separate board appointed by the county, looked at our document and kind of concluded, yeah, there's a problem here, and we'd like the county to issue a moratorium. I think it's interesting, I'm gonna read this paragraph up on the top right, because I think it's so telling that the ag review board put to record. Uh, so when they were looking at all the land cuts that occurred just from '16 to '23, uh, they said, uh, based about the in-family conveyance and the preservation of farmland, they said, "This is an unintended consequence of decisions in the mid-1990s that created the rural residential zone and continued to permit the in-family conveyances. The purpose of these two decisions were to protect our most valued and productive resource, our agricultural land, for future food and animal production while maintaining the tradition of family farming in Woodford County. Yet the evidence is clear these strategies have failed." They end up with their memo asking the fiscal court for that same moratorium. And as you remember, before I get to this slide, the fiscal court did not grant that moratorium request. They said, "Figure out a solution and bring it back to us," if you guys recall. And you know, when we got that directive, uh, the advisory committee, which is a committee for the crowd here, the planning commission advisory committee is a subcommittee of the planning commission that looks at text amendments, looks at documents, and decides whether they're ready to go for public consumption at this board. So the advisory committee is five planning commissioners of the nine, and we got together on December 14th, '23, right after we got the, uh, moratorium rejection directive. We got back together right after Christmas, two weeks later, and then we kind of paused everything, because we were back on our comprehensive plan, and we had a lot of work, it's summer construction season, and we came back in the fall of, uh, September and October, and we worked on the text amendment. And then in December, a year ago, we had a very similar hearing on a text proposal for Articles 2 and 7. But at that time, we decided to just look at the county-side zones and not the city-side zones. And I won't go through that, because we're gonna go through all this in a second, but about everything that's in this text amendment now, county-side is exactly the same as what we sent the county a year ago, except for the in-family conveyance paragraph itself. So we looked at all this stuff, uh, we'll get, we'll go to this when we get to the new text amendment, but all of this is the same this year as it was last year. We looked at weird lot sizes, why we get weird shapes, that kind of stuff, and there was the proposal we put forward to correct the in-family conveyance challenge. We had a simple paragraph up there, highlighted in yellow, I won't go into it because it was rejected, but we sent this to the fiscal court. We also, at the same time, looked at the maps again, courtesy of our GIS department, Kenneth Johns back here behind me, he keeps producing us maps where we can do evaluation. And just in the year alone, while we were working on the text amendment, since the moratorium request, you can see we created another 30 lots. And the average lot size continued to decline for the ag zone, and the majority of lots that we created were small lots care of the in-family conveyance tool. And then we showed you guys this, which was interesting at that time, that we kind of did a worst-case doomsday scenario, I hate to use that term, but it, it worked Tuesday night, got everyone kind of eyes big. But we showed how many parcels under the current situation could be created if everyone maxed out their in-family conveyances. And then with our proposal, we looked at what the number would be if we curtailed it down to a one- or two-lot, uh, option. And it dropped, you know, potentially there could be 8,000 lots created if we keep doing what we're doing, and if we curtailed the rule down to a one- or two-lot option, our proposal, we'd be somewhere around on, less than 900. We did a lot of other things here, we won't go, we're gonna go through all this in a minute, looking at the conservation zone, looking at the A4 zone, housekeeping across all the county-side zones. And then at the end of that meeting in December, as you know, we reviewed the comprehensive plan to see, was our text amendment in line with our comprehensive plan goals and objectives? And we made a finding that it was. Then we sent it to the fiscal court, uh, in December '24. They, uh, debated it, had a lot of good community to debate for about four months. Somewhere into that process, I was asked about lots and building permits, and this email I sent to the fiscal court that basically showed how many lots we had created from the time we asked for the moratorium until that point in early '25, um, and it was like 60-some lots there. But what was interesting, at the same time, we went ahead and pulled every building permit at the request of a magistrate, um, that happened county-side. And we basically went through, this is through March of '25, we pulled every brand-new residence, these aren't additions or remodels, these are new homes that were built county-side from 2016 through 2025. And we had built, interestingly enough, it was almost shocking, 321 homes had been constructed county-side over those 10 years. At, you know, if that was the one subdivision in for-sales, we'd go, wow, that's, that's a big subdivision, but it was shocking that in an area where we have a 30-acre zone and we have rural ag policies, and the comprehensive plan's goal is to preserve farmland, uh, it, it was interesting to note that we had created 321 homes, or an average of 30-some a year, county-side, outside the urban service boundary. So we sent this data to the fiscal court as just add-on data. And then, as you know, they rejected our full text amendment that we sent them, and they sent us back this directive. They sent us back a directive on how they would like the in-family conveyance verbiage to read, and we're gonna get into that in a minute. We got that in April '25. And that brings us to what's happened, how did we get here from May to September? And if you look the slide on the right, um, we got the directive from fiscal court on April 23rd, literally nine days later, we were in a committee meeting working on a solution. So we met in May, then we came back in September, and we basically put together a version of what the fiscal court asked for. We sent a memo out in May, and we put this text amendment, we introduced this text amendment in May of this year, and as you all know, we would open the hearing, see if anyone would come talk, nobody showed up, we would table it, come back the next month. So for seven months or so, we've been opening the hearing, closing the hearing, opening the hearing, closing, closing the hearing, and just a handful of people have showed up until tonight. And then we, September, we tweaked the text amendment, and I'm explaining it in a second, because we've been working on this county-side stuff now going on two years. And at the meantime, the city of for-sales had sent us several directives of their own for fixes in this ordinance. And we had not purposely ignored them, we just backburnered those directives because we've been working on the comprehensive plan, number one, um, we're working on the county-side stuff, number two, and so the city asked us, when were we gonna get on their text amendments? So that's why the advisory committee came back together. So that's why the advisory committee came back together in September and said, look, let's just put, these are all the same chapter. Let's just put the whole thing out there, county side, city side, all the directives we got, and let's get this one amendment done at one time. So these, these, these things that the city sent us are up on the screen, I know they're hard to read for the public. But the first one, for example, had to do with our surety process and the subregs, we got that done. This is interesting, this is before I took this job, I didn't get here until 22. There was a resolution in 2020 about us getting into the accessory dwelling units option across our residential zones to try to address some affordable housing challenges. That was a directive in 2020. Affordable housing directive in 2020, another one that came from the city, they're on the very right. Another directive about removing the PUDs, we did that one, if you remember, that's after I got here. The one in the middle was a directive to clean up the industrial zone verbiage, the terms, the R2 zone, funeral homes, crematoriums. Make sure we're addressing drug and alcohol rehab facilities, where do they fit in the scope of our zones? Looking at churches, accessory building setbacks, all of that was in another resolution. And again, we hadn't done any of these things up to that point. And then the big domino was the city had a housing affordability task force that was created that I served on as ex officio, Chris served on also, it's about 15, 18 people, something like that, that the mayor put forward, had city council members on it, and the whole goal was to look at housing affordability. That, that group worked for several months and came up with a whole bunch of verbiage related to manufactured homes, lot sizes, setbacks, density. The whole goal was to tweak the zoning ordinance, look at everything across the board in the hope that we could achieve some affordable housing opportunities. That directive came from the city September 24, over a year ago. What's in the text amendment now is exactly what the city asked us to do. We didn't change a single page of any of these standards. This came from the housing task force, went to the city of Versailles, and the city of Versailles passed a resolution, either four or five to zero, I forget what the vote count was, to ask us to put this in chapter seven. And we did that verbatim as we were asked to do. And this is a recommendation of that task force and then the city of Versailles. Last thing I'm going to land on, the other thing is there were, there was a new state law passed about manufactured homes where we no longer can discriminate against manufactured homes. The new law basically says, anywhere you can stick build a home, you have to allow manufactured home in any zoning district. Planning commissions are prohibited from discriminating against what they call qualified manufactured homes. So that has to go in our book, in fact, that needs to get put in our book before this law takes effect in July of 26. Knowing we had all these directives, county side stuff, city side stuff, new laws, we went to work on the text amendment and just, again, it's the kitchen sink approach, we just threw it all in there and brought it to you guys in September and started working on it. That brings us to where we're at tonight, and then I promise I'm gonna go through this pretty quick. I said that earlier, but we'll see. This is the chapter here. So the first is article two definitions, there's just one page here. If we were going through the actual text amendment, we'd be walking through 20 some pages. I'm just gonna hit the highlights. There were 19 definitions added that need to match existing Kentucky state laws. We have, we had a lot of missing terms in our definitions that are in the state law, that are in our zoning ordinance. And then the term agricultural use was revised to match what's in the state law. Our current agricultural use term in our book is kind of like just a big giant sentence. It starts, it's got, starts with ag use, but then it dominoes into in-family verbiage. Then it dominoes into mobile homes, it dominoes into temporary mobile homes, tenant houses. And the actual state definition of agricultural use is defined as five contiguous acres where you grow crops, corn, soybeans, cattle, horses. It also includes small farm wineries and equine related activities. So we thought it was important to make sure our agricultural use definition is exactly in line with the state law. We also revised the camp campground definition to make sure it's in the right scale for the rural area. We revised our family member definition because we changed what, how the in-family works. We needed a definition for group living, that could be drug and alcohol, that could be other type of things. We needed to get our manufactured home verbiage clarified. There's a different term in 219, Caris 100, mobile homes got a definition, modular homes got a definition. We wanted to make sure all of those were correct in our book. We've already addressed medical cannabis facilities and solar farms. We have those in the zoning ordinance, but we didn't have them in chapter two as definitions. So again, this is housekeeping. We added an RV park definition, and we'll talk about in the middle in a minute, to really be a deterrent for future RV parks because we know we have a challenge up in Midway. We wanted to make sure we distinguish in between a camp and campground and an RV park. We needed the residential care facility definition under Caris 10982. By the way, that is a facility where someone can move into a single family home. And if they're less than eight people, can do basically different kind of residential care by right. And they kind of are allowed to be around our definition of family. We're deleting the tourist destination and tourist destination expanded defined terms because we now, we have an agritourism definition. And we added the definition for truck stop. And I'll stop right there for a minute. We added the definition of truck stop for a reason. Because right now, we have a definition of convenience store, but we don't have a definition of truck stop. I want to, I guess there was a rumor out on the internet, something I think a lot of people here tonight about supposedly a truck stop coming to Versailles. I can say with 100% certainty, there is not a truck stop coming to Versailles. There's not a zone change that's been filed, there's not a project that's been submitted. The online rumor of that there would be a truck stop going south of town and somebody would be zoning property A1 to B5. Number one, B5 doesn't allow a truck stop. Number two, there's not a B5 rezoning that's been submitted. Not sure where that came from. We are adding a definition of truck stop, but truck stops can only go in an industrial zone. And that's in our document here. Because we put the word truck stop so we could be, in the future, be very procedural about what's a convenience store and what's a truck stop. But we put truck stop right in there under solar farms and bourbon, we pushed it into industrial as the category that basically is hard to get. The addition of the definition of truck stop and even limiting the definition where it doesn't include overnight parking. The whole idea was to deter the day a truck stop would ever come looking at our county. The real risk would maybe would be up along Midway, along I-64. We're not going to get a truck stop down here south of town. The B5 zone does not allow truck stop. And later, I'm going to point to our comprehensive plan, our comprehensive plan also talks about it would be prohibited to do something in the entryway corridor into the community also. So I don't know where this rumor started. I promised I wouldn't say the word fake news, but I just said it. But I don't know where it came from, there's no truck stop filed, there's no one's talked to me. I called the property owner, I called the realtor. We've been getting emails and texts and getting a beating on voices of Versailles. But I can tell you, there's no project and what we're putting in the ordinance is 100% to deter potentially a future use coming to our town. That's what we're doing. So, don't know where that came from, but. So let's get, let's get back on the ordinance. I don't know where it came from, I don't know where it came from. But, but I mean, it is, it is, it is a challenge, I want to point out, because we have the word convenience store. And in the B5 zone, you can do a convenience store, but the square footage is limited. And I guess that was probably the deterrent where you couldn't do, because no one's gonna come in and do a small building. So they put a minimum building cap. But the B4 zone doesn't have that. So a convenience store, for example, like Speedway or the new Clark Pump and Shop, they can be 6,000 square footer, or the new East Step project over on Tyrone. Those buildings can be bigger, but what's the difference between a convenience store and a truck stop? Well, that's why we put the definition in there. We wanted to be very clear that if someone comes in and says, well, I'm a convenience store under your B4 definition, we're gonna go, well, tell me what you do. And when they start telling us about the diesel pumps and overnight parking, we're gonna say, no, you're a truck stop, you gotta be industrial. And by the way, there's no industrial land available in this community. There's a little bit up in Midway, but most of it's spoken for. So that was the plan, but I don't know where this came from, south of town. There is a development south of town that's under construction that's going to have a two acre convenience store. Pretty sure you can't do a truck stop on two acres and some apartments, and that's all that's approved at this time. There is nothing approved on the left side of the property going out of town, it's currently zoned agriculture. And all you can do is build a house or farm it at this current time, so. So let's get into article seven and rip through this so you guys can get some questions answered. We want to start with this. This is an important page in article seven real quick. Because this is the overall, where all these zones that we have across our zoning ordinance, this is something we use every day. People call us and say, hey, what can I do in a neighborhood business zone? Or where can I have a bed and breakfast? Or where can I have a daycare? And this is where all those uses, all these terms that we have, some of the terms are very outdated. And so these are what we're planning, we're moving the conservation zone up in the ordinance because we're converting the A2 zone back to A1. And there's a new single family zone that was a directive of the city. So this is kind of the general outline of what's happening in this very long chapter. The conversion of A2 is a little complicated, you gotta almost be a zoning nerd here to kind of figure out what we're doing. But when we looked at the A2 zone and Kenneth Johns again updated this for us for 25, we only have 51 parcels in the whole county that's zoned A2. When you open the A2 section of the zoning ordinance that literally says, go see A1. There's no change, it's a 30 acre zone. It's used as the hop skip zone concept in the rural residential. And there's times where people didn't zone everything rural residential, and so there's a few residual pieces. The plan is to convert this back to agriculture because they have the exact same rules, exact same uses, there's no difference in the zones. So this conversion table is brand new for our ordinance. Going forward, if we ever want to convert a zone, delete a zone, add a zone, this conversion table will kind of be our running archive of what we did. So what we're proposing to do is convert the A2 zone back to A1. And then the A4 zone, what we call small community, is just being relabeled from A4 to SC to match the word small community. So this, this is in the beginning of chapter seven and it's an important chart moving forward. The map on the right shows our A2 zones and then again, shows you, we only have 51 total parcels. In the ag zone, we did a lot of stuff, we talked about this last time, so I'm not going to go through a lot of this. Again, we put a right to farm policy in the book for the first time. We got an assist from the ag review committee on that, a pretty nice new policy in our ag zone. We looked at the in-family conveyance, as you all know, and we looked at the conditional use permit list and we shrunk her on down. We, we, we talked about, we're allowing way too many CUPs out in the county. That's why we're deleting that tourism destination expanded, which gave us way to the RV park. We, we put, we left the CUPs in the book that feel like they belong out in the county. We revised the building lot width standard from the building line to setback line. And by doing that, we just changed the word building line to setback line. And the whole plan there was to get rid of these dudes. These are flag lots, it's crazy that you can create lots like this. But this is what our ordinance allows us to do. So simply by changing the verbiage there, that the lot width has to be established at the setback line versus the building line, we'll no longer have flag lots. You'll have your frontage and the lot will stay pretty true till it widens out. Simple fix in the ordinance and it gets away from these goofy flag lots that historically have been created here in the county. Hopefully that's not anyone's lot here that's in the audience. Some weird shapes though, and I can imagine mowing around these fence lines and stuff. And of course, we looked at accessory building setbacks because we don't have any in the book. Signage for CUPs, we don't have any in the book for the ag zone. And then we looked at the in-family conveyance. With that, because we're here tonight, and again, I don't think we need to get back to the in-family conveyance, but we did look at the map again. Kenneth got us another map for the rural areas and you can look at again from 2016 all the way now up to 2025. We keep looking at the map because we know we've continued to create lots. We created another 27 lots in the last year. So if you look at 24 map, you look at the 25 map, we created another 27 lots, the lot size continues to drop. Big farms are getting chopped up, big farms are getting chopped into 30s, small farms are getting chopped up by way of the in-family conveyance, and you all know the trend. But from 2026 to 2025, we've created 200 lots, mostly in the southern part of Woodford County, outside the urban service boundary. And again, we've created 321 new homes outside the urban service boundary. This is the page that we talked, this is where we stopped last month. If you remember, you all had me do some housekeeping on the floor and we were close to voting on this maybe, two months ago, I'm sorry. And, but you guys wordsmithed some stuff, we didn't have it in print, so we decided, let's hold off, get it in print. The items in yellow are what the planning commission changed, different than the fiscal court directive. We put a heading at the top. You guys define, it used to say judicial order and you guys changed that pursuant to court order arising from substantial hardship. We made it clear that LLCs, trusts and estates are prohibited from doing these. And then we did some language about the deed. We also changed number five, if you remember, it had a 10-year hold on the parent track, 10-year hold on the convey track, you guys changed that to five and 10. The two acre minimum's the same, the one or two lot option the fiscal court sent us is the same. And if you remember also, there's a conditional use permit requirement now, first, as a kickoff before you can do that. That came from the fiscal court, so that's in the ordinance. I updated this goofy little chart here though, for tonight, for Tuesday actually, and then for tonight. We did this in 24, but now that the, the numbers have changed, you can see, Kenneth got me a little better detail on the split between 31 and 99 because that's what's in the sliding scale and our chart was more under 50, over 50. But basically, under the current standard right now, you're eligible if you're 15 acres and you can do two, 31, you can do four, 66, seven, 100 plus, you can do 15. Potentially, there could be about 8,200 lots created. Under the new proposal, it goes up to 1433. So if you look at last year, we were at 877, the reason why it's gone up another 600 lots or so is because the county drug the floor number down from 50 acres to 30 to start with. And they opened up who can do two lots, we had it at 100 acres plus, you could do two, the county made that 50 plus. So that means there's more people that can do two lots and actually more people that can do one lot. And then, so those are the parcels we currently have, 353, 590, and we could do 1433. I want to point something out though, again, that, that's more philosophical issue on this. If you look at the top chart on the right, the number of people that are eligible today are 1,313. If you go backwards to the maps, we have about 4,469 parcels, so about 4,500 parcels. Right now, our in-family conveyance rule really only benefits 1,300 property owners. So you got about 4,500 people that own property in Woodford County, but only 1,300 of them are even eligible today. It goes down to 943. So again, we got an exception rule in the ag zone where our minimum is 30 acres, we got an exception to a rule in the ag zone for 1,300 people. So there's a lot of people, when we met Tuesday night, I asked who owns property over 15 acres, who doesn't? It's interesting that literally one neighbor can do the cut and the next neighbor can't do the cut. Anyone who has less than 15 acres has no options. Anyone over 15 acres currently can do this. Under the new rule, you'd have to be over 30, technically it's 32, but our data set was 30 to 49, so that's why we use 30. But the new rule, if you're under 32, you get no option. If you're over 32, you're gonna have an option. Still an exception to the rule, it's not, it's not perfect in kind of planning speak, but it is a compromise. It is something we've done in this county for 35 years. And the directive from the fiscal court is clear that they want to continue this process just in a limited scale. So we're on the same page, we're, we're going down from that 8,000 count to potentially just over 1,000. So it's a win, if you look at it, it's just, it's just not perfect. So with that, we get today, two zone, we're gonna go through this super duper, in fact, I'm gonna skip most of this because you guys, this is the exact same text amendment as a year ago that we sent to the court, there's not one sentence that changed differently from the text amendment you approved in December of last year. The only thing we changed was the in-family conveyance sentence. That's the only thing that changed from what we sent to the fiscal court a year ago. So unless, and then if you guys have questions, you can ask me. I'm gonna go through all this county side stuff and just jump past it all. And if you have questions, you can. And if you have questions, you can ask me. But I want to get to the city side stuff because I think that's what folks in the audience here are here to talk about. So I'm, again, we'll come back to any of this if you guys want to. Kenneth got me all new data maps for all those county side rural zones. So I appreciate that. So that brings us to the single family, what we'll call city side zones in the directive that we got from the city of Versailles. Let me get to my notes here because I'm just sort of winging it off top of my head. I'm not following my notes. Want to make sure I get the right stuff in here. So as you guys know, we have our low density, single family zone. We have three of those currently, R1A, R1B, R1C. They're different sizes, different minimum square footages, basically can do the same thing. One of the things we did to this zone was the cleanup, language related to accessory buildings, fences, swimming pools, solar panels. Again, directly from that directive, prior director from the city. We reorganized the list of conditional use permits to tighten those up for a single family. And then we revised the yard lot and height requirements. And we added manufactured homes and we added accessory dwelling units. Again, all of these are offshoots of city directives. The accessory dwelling unit is interesting. We've never done those here in our county or city. They're done almost everywhere. Accessory dwelling units allow someone to do something above their garage or out back, let their kid move in there, bring grandma back to the house or rent it out, whatever. But what it does in the big scope of affordable housing and housing opportunities, it allows us to use our land more efficiently and create other dwelling opportunities kind of all over the city. So in the R1A, those accessory dwellings would be limited to 25% of the footprint of the principal dwelling, whether you do it over a garage or put something out back. The idea is, you know, again, if your kid wants to live there, great. Whatever, call them mother-in-law suites, granny flats, whatever the term you want to use. They're accessory dwellings. We were asked by the city of Versailles to open up this door and we put them in the zones. This is the R1A zone. Minor change goes from a 15,000 square foot size to 10,000. I want to point out, we're not changing the density. It's four units to the acre. But if you do the math, the old number of 15,000 square feet, that doesn't equal four units to the acre, just so you know. 10,000 square feet is four units to the acre. So we're actually not changing the density. We're just correcting, well, we're lowering the lot size because it was 15,000. We're narrowing the width slightly and we're relaxing the setbacks. You see on the right, we're putting what we call residential unit types in every single zone. So you, so the reader of this book, for better readability, can clearly understand, we say you can do single family dwellings, but what is the unit type? So we're going to have a kind of a, you know, dummy proof little chart here that says, can I do a single family home? Yes. Can I do a modular home? Yes. Can I do a manufactured home qualified? Yes. Can I do a manufactured mobile home? No. Those are two kinds of products. Can I do accessory dwelling? Yes. So we're putting that in every zone so people can clearly understand what are the unit types permitted in each zone. The R1B is the next one up. It drops from 8,000, or 10,000 to 8,000, slight drop. 80 foot wide lot goes to 75 or 70. Density goes to five units to the acre. Again, yes, 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 no, yes, on the unit types. R1C goes from 75, 100 square foot to 5,000. Lot widths stay the same. Setbacks get a little looser. Density goes to eight units to the acre. Again, yes, 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 no, yes, on the unit types. Again, every bit of these changes came from the Housing Task Force. Our advisory committee did not tweak these. We put these in verbatim that came from the city's adopted resolution. The other thing that was interesting about the city side zone was to create a new single family zone that would be titled R1D. It is a small zone, again, with the hope to entice affordable housing opportunities. And it would be a 3,500 square foot lot that's 50 foot wide, which comes out to 12 units to the acre. To be, look at that and say, where is that? Well, Woolridge Gardens, all those homes entered of that, you guys. We got them here in the town, dozens of them. Old parts of town, they're all over. But in the zoning ordinance currently, we traditionally build modern suburban style subdivisions on quarter acre lots. You guys see all our newest subdivisions. But if you go to the old parts of town, parts of Midway, this is what we built for 75 years in this country. And we have lots that are 3,500 square foot. We got lots in Midway that are 50 foot wide all over the place. This was an idea from the, the task force to create building opportunities to try to fill that housing gap we have in our community. So it's a new zone. I know some people are going to get a little sticker shock on that and go, whoa, that's small and that's dense. But here's one kind of interesting fact. We have no R1D in our community currently. If this was the past, anyone that would try this would have to go through a zone change. And you guys know how zone changes go. It's not, there is no lots that would be eligible. You would have to zone your way to this new product if anyone even chose to do it. The way Woolridge Garden was done, as you know, we're under the PUD options, which will no longer exist. So this would have to be a zone change to come in and zone to these 3,500 square foot lots. So that's a new product. Getting, getting to R2, the R2 zone traditionally is what we call our two family residential zone. You can do duplexes, twin homes, single family homes. And what we're doing here is shrinking them down just slightly from 12,000 to 10,000. We talked about that in the early zone change. We're getting rid of the 8,000 square foot and we're just doing on the right, we just defer that you have to build under the R1B standards, which it turns out to be 7,500. So moving forward, that's how we're kind of handling this, what we call pyramid stacked unit type. In the R2, you're going to, if you want to do single family, you do R1B. That's kind of how it's going to domino. And then the unit types there are listed again. In R2, you can do a duplex or twin home. Twin homes like a two unit town home, single family detached, modular home, manufactured home qualified, no mobile homes or manufactured homes. Accessory dwellings are a no because you already get two dwellings in R2. So we're not opening the door to accessory dwellings in the R2 zone. R3, this is new stuff here. And I'm sure some folks are going to want to ask us about it, but it came from the task force. Basically, the R3 zone saying is very similar. We get rid of all these kind of weird side setbacks based on heights and sums of sides and just go to flat setbacks. But the density changes from eight units to the acre to 16. So there was a doubling of the density for R3. What's interesting right now is we allow 11 units to the acre if you do a town home. But if you actually do an apartment building, you only get eight units to the acre. That's kind of odd. We've got apartments all over this community that are beyond eight units to the acre. They were built years ago or they were done under PUDs or whatnot. So going from eight units to 16 looks like a big jump. It's a doubling. But when you look at collectively 16 units to the acre, it's, it's not really out of line with other communities. It's actually still kind of low. Eight units is extremely low for R3 to do apartments. And again, I think the task force that met, their ideas were, look, if we're going to build and try to get units in this community, whether they be affordable or not, get people in, we're going to have to use our land wiser, denser, go more vertical. And if the whole goal is to maintain the urban service boundary, take the pressure off the county side development, we got to develop more dense in the city side urban service boundary. And that's right in line with the comprehensive plan, by the way. That's exactly what our comprehensive plan suggests we should be doing in this community. R4, same thing, pretty straightforward, but the density doubles from 16 to 32 units to the acre. Looks like a lot, but we don't have a ton of R4 even in our city anywhere. If anyone wanted to do something of this nature, they would have to zone to it and battle through those type of conditions, zone change, general development plans, opposition potentially. But the idea is to get the zoning ordinance out of its own way. So if someone wanted to come here and do a denser development, to get more families into homes, whatever the case, these are, we're, we're just using the land more dense. This is the R4 chart and I want to point something out on this. And again, some of the planning commission, this is the first time you guys have seen this. The density is at the bottom where we go to 32. One decision the task force made, which is unique, is because the R4 is in such short supply and the goal is to use it most efficiently, this actually legislates out that hierarchy of other unit types. Where like, for example, in R3, you could build a single family home, do a duplex, do an eightplex. In the R4, it's exclusively only going to be allowed for multi-family dwellings. You're not allowed to do a single family dwelling. You can't do a manufactured home. It's exclusively going forward would be just used for single, multi-family. That's some kind of new stuff, but I understand that. We don't have a ton of R4. We don't even really have any footprints someone probably zoned to to even get this many units. But I think the plan is if someone ever did it, we would like to see them use that as efficiently as possible and not can, not take a pretty good piece of land and just put three homes on it when it could have had 20 units on it, that kind of thing. That brings us to the manufactured home and mobile home subdivision. This was truly housekeeping. If you guys have ever read this section of the zoning ordinance, it'll hurt your head. No one builds mobile home parks. You all know that. We'll never see another one built. But we use the term mobile home park. It should be manufactured. They're governed under the health department. We have a couple of old ones that can swap some units out. They're, they're just not something people are going to come build. You'd never probably get one zoned. They need to be on sewer. It's not a very efficient use of land. They're just out there and, but we wanted to clean this up that if someone ever built one, we put some pretty solid rules in place. The weird thing about the mobile home section, it has a whole bunch of stuff about temporary mobile homes in it. That's where the tenant house verbiage lives for farms. You have to go look in the mobile home section and we rolled that back to the farm section. And I don't think we want to encourage temporary mobile homes in our community. Maybe manufactured homes, but mobile homes are units prior to 1976. Manufactured homes are post 1976. And then manufactured home qualified are less than five years old. So that new state law makes us put manufactured qualified homes and those can't be older than five years. Those are going to be new units you buy at Clayton Homes or whatever. But manufactured homes under the federal definition are 1976. That's old. But the mobile homes even before that. That's the stuff that blew out of Kansas and landed up there by the Frankfurt County line up there. I don't know anyone's building mobile home parks. I don't know where you find pre-1976 units, but they're still a, a thing in the state law. Our office zone is next and I promise we're going to be done with these super quick because we're, we're down the hill here. Our office zone is where we wanted to clean up some terms. We had a lot of old terms and we're just modernizing, shortening the CUP. And we added a dense, we lowered the density option. Currently, you can do R4 development in an office zone. And our office zones are small. Sometimes they're around the downtown and other areas. We thought that we should roll that back to the R3 standard, a little softer transition around our office areas. And this is the actual verbiage. I'm sorry, I put it in here. Again, we cleaned up the principal uses. We addressed the crematorium issue. Did a crematorium, if you can do a funeral home in the P1 zone, but if you put a crematorium facility with it, it's prohibited as an accessory use. You got to get over into the industrial zone before you do kind of those type of things. Talking about drive-through banks, modernizing our terms here, healthcare facilities, daycares, nurseries, parking garages. We cleaned up our conditional use permits. And again, this is where we added the option to do what we call rehabilitation home, residential care or group living, i.e. drug and alcohol. We, it's funny, we have the term rehabilitation home in Chapter two, but when you get in Chapter seven, you can't find one zone that's allowed. So if you wanted to do a drug and alcohol rehab facility in our community, you, you, you see the definition, you're like, where can I do it? And we say, you can't do it. So we wanted to make sure that every use has a home in Chapter seven. In the office zone where obviously if we allow medical facilities and doctors offices, if someone wants to come in here and do a drug and alcohol rehab or a transitional sober living, these are the type of things we would allow. But they are still conditional uses. You still have to have a public hearing in front of the board of adjustments. It's not a move in ready type use. Get to our B1 zone. Again, we wanted to make sure we defined what retail sales and service. We've got a general term of retail. There's so many things that fall into retail. We're going to explain to you how we're now defining that better. And we wanted to, again, reorganize the CUPs. And we changed the density from multi-family back to single family only. The neighborhood business zone is the lowest intensity commercial zone. It's supposed to be around neighborhoods and there's no justification to have these more intense uses adjacent to neighborhoods. So the idea is we're fine with some residential use, but we don't want it out of scale of a small neighborhood business zone or an area. So we cleaned up a ton of terms in the B1 zone. You know, again, we had drug and hardware stores, athletic clubs, indoor theaters. Those are just out of scale for the neighborhood business. So we, at the top, you can see we came up with the term retail sales and service. And then you're going to be able to see definitions of that later. We also tightened up the CUPs and put them in scale. For example, now in the business zone, you can't do even a retail building over 5,000. That's more on scale with the residents. If you want to go over 5,000, you got to get a CUP. Now we're to the B2 zone and I want to point this out. There was another committee that I, I sort of got shoehorned on when I first got here. It was called the Downtown Business Development Group or something of that nature. And their focus was to look at the downtown area of Versailles and make sure we're keeping these storefronts full, that we got uses happening downtown and that we can do things downtown that you would imagine. It's interesting in our current ordinance, you can't do a hotel in our downtown. You can't do a church in our downtown. Yet we got churches, hotels. You actually have to do a conditional use permit to do the things that traditionally have been in downtown for a long time. So cleaning up this master list in the B2 was something another city committee did and reviewed. And if you look at the list now of what would be allowed in downtown Versailles or Midway, it's what you would imagine would be downtown. But it's not convenience stores. It's not intense retail. It's not big retail boxes. It's not commercial parking lots. Those things need conditional use permits. It's not eating establishments with drive-throughs. It's eating establishments, but not with drive-throughs. And then the biggest challenge we had had to do with residential use. Again, one of those directives from Versailles was to allow residential use downtown. So what we came up with, again, I've mentioned Kenneth Johns name several times. He's probably loving that. But Kenneth and I came up with a, a concept here. And this is, man, this has been in the can here for a year and a half. Number one, we define on the left, this retail sales and service concept. Now you can go in the zone and say, okay, what is retail sales? What are personal services? What are repair services? And we scaled the type of retail that we think makes sense in the B1 zone, the B2 zone, the B4 zone, the B5 zone. So when someone comes in now, they, they say, what can I do? I say retail. And they're like, what's that mean? Well, if you sell something, doesn't say how big. Now we say how big and what those uses generally are. These are more examples to follow through. But on the right is something we created that, that I'm pretty excited about. One of the ideas and one of the challenges, and this came up here in Versailles. We had a lady bought a house on Morgan Street and she wanted to run a business and live there. And we told her under the ordinance that she could run the business downstairs, but she had to live upstairs. She said, well, what if I want my bedroom downstairs? We said, well, you can't have a bedroom downstairs. You can have the business downstairs, but you can't have the. So she had to go to the Board of Adjustments to get permission to live downstairs and run her business. So when we thought about that, we thought, you know, we understand why we prohibit residential on the first floor downtown. Because I think we want to maintain the integrity of these downtown storefronts. We don't want to see a downtown building turn into apartment downstairs where we have a 12 foot or 14 foot Florida ceiling height ratio. We don't want to see that. We want to preserve these buildings. They're also in historic district. But once you get beyond those historic buildings, what is the problem with someone living downstairs or having a business and, business and live there? And some of these are already homes, like on Morgan Street. There are already single family dwellings that are in the commercial zone. So they can run the business, they're just not allowed to live on the first floor. So we created this, what we call residential restrictive area. And the way this works is, and this is the Versailles map, that in the yellow boundary, it's first floor retail, second, third floor, office or residential. But in the blue outside Main Street in the traditional core, we're going to be flexible that if someone wants to run a business or live there, we're good either way. We're not messing up the buildings. We're preserving the Main Street buildings, but we're giving flexibility for people to run businesses, whether they be a home-based business and then live. If they want to sleep on the downstairs, upstairs attic, we're out of policing where they sleep. they sleep. This is the Midway map, which is interesting, a little different. Midway's B2 zone kind of is dissected a little bit. But again, the whole idea was that this area on Main Street where we have all these historic businesses and all this great retail, we want to be able to let people have residential on the second and third floor, but we never want to compromise those first floor retail spaces. But when we get behind these buildings, like for example, behind Main Street, we've got single-family homes down there right now in the B2 zone. So what this map does is it restricts where the residential can be, what floor, in kind of a hybrid situation. We drag the stuff up here in the north part because those buildings moving forward, if they're redeveloped, we want them to be kind of storefront-style buildings that traditionally have been there. So this would be a new map that would come in. And by the way, these are the first two color exhibits that would be in our zoning ordinance. Our book's about 40 years old, so it's interesting that we'd actually have color maps in our book. That's just a interesting concept here, right? So I, we're pretty proud of these maps. They could be tweaked. We can move it a parcel north, parcel south. But the idea is we restrict in the yellow and you're a little looser to run your business and reside or mix them up, go one direction, go the other over time. So that's our B2 changes. Again, we messed around with the entire list of uses as we went through this. We just talked about that, going backwards, sorry. B4, and I promise I'm almost done. Again, we looked at this terms, we looked at the CUPs, we looked at the services, we cleaned up the terms, we cleaned up the CUPs, we moved some things to CUPs that we think need to be there. But the things you can do by right kind of fit what we know is happening in the B2. You can do restaurants with drive-throughs, you can do vehicle service, you can sell cars, you can do retail, all the type of things you can imagine. And then we have our list of what retail sales, retail service and repair oriented. There's exceptions. There's some things we're not going to allow in the B4 zone because they're too intense. That brings us to B5 and the word RV park. One of the things we wanted to do is define the difference between a campground and an RV park. I know no one's happy about the RV park potentially coming north of Midway. It was done under a CUP in the Ag Zone. But going forward, just like the truck stop, we thought it was important to have a definition, have a standard. So if someone comes in and says, I'm doing an RV park, we can say, that's the rule. We made the rule tight. We made the standard tight. And I'll just be honest, it's a deterrent. We made the standard for the RV park there at the bottom. We capped the number of units. We make them be on sewer. We put them in zones that are hard to get to, that really aren't out there. We stick them in the industrial zone in the B5 zone. And, you know, the RV park that potentially we got going north could be hundreds of lots. We capped this at 100-lot RV park. They would have to do a zone change. They're in these intent zones. So if someone comes in tomorrow and says, I'm going to do an RV park, we're going to say, there's the rules. And they're going to say, that's not fair. And we're going to say, well, that's the rule. It's how we did, you guys know agricultural manufacturing-type facilities. We've got specific use farms for solar farms. The idea of these things that we think we may not want in our county, you got to set standards. And if someone could come in and do them, great. But you make the rules tough and hopefully they'll move on over to Franklin County or go down to Mercer County or something. Lot looser down that way. But in Woodford County, I think the goal is not to see these things populate, especially in the Ag Zone. There's no understanding how an RV park should function in prime farmland. If they want an RV park, they need to put it on sewer, get in the urban service boundary, be close to an interstate so these rigs can get in and off the highway and fight the fight with the neighbors if that's what it has to be. So that we get to the industrial zone and we're about finished. We wanted to define, just like retail, the difference between industrial service, manufacturing, light and heavy industry, RV park. We reorganized the list of uses. The CUP is very similar to every zone, housekeeping. We made things permitted by right or CUPs all across that. We created our definitions of the difference between light industrial service, light industrial manufacturing, heavy industrial service, heavy industrial manufacturing, and of course, truck stop very clearly has been labeled in this zone. To do a truck stop, you have to be in the industrial zone. And that's where we left it. Finishing up with, we deleted the conservation zone at the end of the ordinance because we moved it up to the front. And with that, I'm going to finish off with one other thing for the planning commission. As I mentioned before, anytime we do a zone change amendment like we did earlier, we do a text amendment, it's important that even though there's going to be a lot of community debate about what we're doing, for the planning commission, the staff, it's important, we always go back to our comprehensive plan, review our goals and objectives and make sure what we're doing is in line with our adopted comprehensive plan. It's the Bible. Everything filters down from that. When you get to our laws, the comprehensive plan means a lot. We're working on it. But I thought what was interesting for tonight's meeting is we actually have got the goals and objectives done. If you remember, we spent a while and we worked on the goals and objectives. Those are in line, they've been revised, they were adopted in '24. These, we're not changing these. We're going to work on the rest of the plan, but these are our general blueprint. This is our roadmap to the future. This is what our comprehensive plan is. And I just wanted to walk through and see, are we out of bounds with some of these changes or are we doing what the plan said? And interesting enough, as I went through these, everything I've highlighted in yellow literally matches something we did. For example, right there at the top, enhance the expansion, revitalize the commercial needs within the Central Business District of Versailles Midway. It's exactly what we did in the B2. Industrial, encourage reuse, redevelopment, decline in industrial areas. Residential's interesting down there at the bottom. Encourage the development or redevelopment of adequate housing to meet the needs of all the county's current and future population at all income levels, affordable housing. The bottom one's the big one, in my opinion. This deals with the in-family stuff, deals with the city-side stuff. We have an objective in our comprehensive plan that we recently just put to print that says, encourage future residential growth to be located within the urban service boundary in small community while discouraging residential subdivision growth that's scattered outside the urban service boundary. It's spot-on why we restricted the RR zone and why we're curbing the in-family. Again, you go through this whole comprehensive plan and I can't tell you how many times the word affordable housing's mentioned, talking about growing in the urban service boundary, being more dense. Our whole concept of our comprehensive plan is we have an urban service boundary, the plan is to grow in here so we don't grow out in the county. It also, clear as a bell, tells us what we're supposed to be doing out in the agricultural area. We're supposed to be providing and protecting, or to provide sufficient agricultural land and we're supposed to be protecting agriculture, prime farmlands, preserving the integrity, preserving the character. I mean, you look at the comprehensive plan and I have a hard time understanding how we even have an in-family conveyance policy, why we do rural cluster developments, because when I read our agricultural goals, it's spot-on. We build in the city and we preserve out in the county. So I went through all these. You all don't have them in front of you because I thought it was important that we make sure these type of text amendments, there's a lot here, to make sure they're meeting the directive of the comprehensive plan as well as the directives that we got from our parent governments, Woodford County and the City of Versailles. So I went through all that. That's my whole spill. I know I said I'd be five minutes and I think I'm right on time. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any planning commission questions. I know we've been, we've had this in front of us since September. You guys have had the Ag side since May and we've been working on this for two years. The staff feels it's ready to go, but we understand there's some citizens have latched on to this last minute and they may have questions and that's valid. So I'm glad to answer any questions from you all and then turn it loose and let the folks ask us why we made what changes we did.
Any questions from the...
One thing I'd like for you to touch on a little bit more and clarify a little bit more is the manufactured homes compared to stick-built homes.
Yeah.
If a developer in his, I guess restrictions, says that they will not allow manufactured homes, you cannot do a manufactured home in that subdivision?
Yeah. So the, so the new state law prohibits planning commissions from restricting our manufactured homes. Right now, we only allow manufactured homes in the Ag Zone, mobile homes in the Ag Zone over five acres. You can't do a manufactured home anywhere in any zone except the Ag Zone. The state law says we're going to have to allow manufactured homes qualified. That's in KRS 100 versus a regular manufactured homes in KRS 219. A qualified manufactured home can't be older than five years, it can have some architectural components to it, it has to be on a permanent foundation. We can't discriminate on those in our book. But a private developer, Chris, if you went out there and said, hey, I'm going to take 10 acres and put these out there, you could deed restrict them if you want. You're allowed to do that. Most of subdivisions in town don't allow manufactured homes.
That's not up to the planning commission.
No, and we're prohibited from doing that.
Make sure...
What'll be interesting is we see plaits and if you, let's say we get a plat in the future, an in-family conveyance and they put a note, no manufactured homes. That's their right. But in the zoning ordinance, we have to allow stick-built, anywhere you stick-build a home, we have to allow manufactured home. Now, is the city going to get populated with them? It's probably unlikely with the land costs we have here. I mean, who's going to go buy a lot for $100,000 and put a $99,000 manufactured home on it? Well, my, maybe I will, I don't know. But I can't afford to live here.
If there's, if there's a subdivision...
Yeah, you can restrict.
Adena Woods, Adena Trace.
It's probably already restricted, yeah.
It's restricted and says in their restrictions that...
No manufactured homes.
So that's what I wanted to clarify.
Yeah. And they may say no modular, they may say no mobile. But, but again, it, for the community, the city did a demo project on High Street, took a lot, put a manufactured home in to show people, had it open, that you could tour through it for several weeks, to show people this product has evolved, it's comparable. I think that unit was 200 and some thousand dollars, the lots, whatever. That may be how we get to affordable housing someday. You know, literally a family can get in a home like that. It's a nice home, it's decent size, and it's less than $250,000. But the challenge will be, a lot of the lots we have, the vacant lots are small, as we've heard about. They're narrow. That's why we had to loosen up the setbacks. It may be impossible to put a manufactured home on some of our lots, but the state law requires we have to have this verbiage in our book going forward. Yeah. It's a good question.
Any other comments or questions from the commissioners? Okay, if, was there a sign sheet? Okay, we don't have a sign sheet. So if anyone would like to speak, come up and state your name and you have five minutes.
And I'll say real quick, anyone that gets up, I can go to any slide you might want to refer to, I can back up the PowerPoint. Okay, all right, no problem.
So thank you for your all's patience this evening. My name is Joe Johnson. I am Cedar Ridge HLA president and also I'm a highly engaged citizen. I want to thank Mr. Hunter. He did an excellent job Tuesday night at Troy Presbyterian Church, providing his, as you saw tonight, his detailed knowledge of the zoning amendments and for him sharing his wisdom with the rural, South rural Woodford County community. Last Thursday, November 6th, about 3:45 in the afternoon, I worked from home, someone knocked on my door. I looked, I thought, should I? I opened it. And that individual asked me if I was aware of the 117-page zoning ordinance, Articles 2 and 7, and if I was aware of the depth and breadth of those amendments. So I took a deep breath, invited him in and said, enlighten me. And again, I want to repeat, I'm a highly engaged, I like to believe I'm somewhat connected individual. So the outcome of that conversation was absolutely not, was not aware of it. And I have clearly come to realize, nor are the citizens of the City of Versailles. So this is kind of, the word last minute's been used several times, to the citizens of Versailles, this is last minute. And if we were to do a timeline, to your all's standpoint, there's certain components inside this that you all have just seen as well. I could take up more than my allotted five minutes, but I won't. And address specific issues stating the article number, the section number title, the page number, subsection title, but I won't because many others here likely will. But I do want to specifically ask that the 117-page amendment to zoning ordinance 2, and Articles 2 and 7, be tabled until two specific occurrences happen. Number one is the planning commission receives and assesses the housing study that they commissioned before any vote occurs on the 117-page amendment to zoning ordinance Articles 2 and 7. So that'd be the first one. The second one, which as I speak, I believe for the citizens of Versailles, that we, the citizens, schedule a public educational meeting at Simmons Elementary with Mr. Hunter. Mr. Hunter has knowledge, expertise and the wisdom to help the citizens of Versailles to truly understand the sweeping changes that are being put before you all to vote on. If you take the time to do that education on the front end, that's going to save the other two, other three bodies of having to be bombarded with citizens and questions and the debate. So I propose that it be tabled, Articles 2 and 7, until those two components occur. Therefore, I respectfully ask the Versailles Midway Woodford County Planning Commission, table then vote until these two critically important steps occur. I wish to submit this into record and because this has been a long evening, I also have seven others I wish to submit into record. One from Bennett Williams, one from Debbie Cooper, so this is a lot faster than speaking and reading, one from John Sorman, one from Ms. Isberg, one from Ms. Williams, and another one from Lori Sorman. And I wish, if you don't mind, to submit these, Ms. Arul, into record. Thank you all for your time and consideration.
My name is Jim Mansfield. I live in South Woodford on Troy Pike. And we had a great meeting as he spoke about on Tuesday night and very informative. Want to thank Mr. Hunter and Ms. Perry for coming and helping us get clearer on what the proposals are, that sort of thing. My concern and the concern of a lot of folks in South Woodford is that if we keep going the way we're going, we're going to ruin what we have. So I commend you all for recognizing the problem and trying to do something about it. We appreciate that. Personally, I don't understand why having a 30-acre minimum needs to have an exception to that. But if, if we're talking about farmers, and I'm a farmer, there are some other things built into the zoning ordinances like the, the tenant opportunity for, to build out another house for a family member or an employee or a tenant, that's one. And now you're going to add, I think, accessory dwelling. So, you know, the, the younger people could have a smaller house and then when the time comes to take over the farm, mom and pop, the older people can move to the smaller house and the young people can have the bigger house. I mean, there's opportunities there. And you can always cut off 30 acres. You've always been able to do that, to make a lot for somebody that you want to keep close. So I'm just saying that there's things already built in. So why automatically allow more lots? I don't, I don't understand it. But I know you have a difficult job and I appreciate what you're doing.
Good evening, members. Appreciate your service. I've been on both sides of this podium and lawsuits and everything else. I've signed a lot of plaits that have come through here and some of them went through and some of them didn't over the years. But as a fifth-generation Woodford Countyan, I know we're from the greatest place on earth. We couldn't be any luckier. But having worked with the existing text for 30 years, this one, which I just saw a couple of weeks ago, really concerns me in many, many ways. With regards to the farmers, the in-family... With regards to the farmers, the in-family conveyance has always been an ordeal. I think that with occupancy, proximity to the existing home on the property, there's lots of ways to make that where you can't just abuse it. And I don't know how often it's been abused, but I don't have any problem with trying to strengthen that, you know, for our farmers. We can't tell a farmer what he can and can't do with his, with his land. But our land is what makes us unique. I mean, we have a, they called this the asparagus bed of Kentucky when they came here 250 years ago, because it's different. This soil is not like soil anywhere. We tore down, we destroyed Hardenfield's Place with the new Kroger store on the number-one agricultural soil in the whole state of Kentucky. But we needed a Kroger store, so I understand that. With regards to the rural residential, I think we did a bad job getting down to a single zone, or single two zones. Once an in-family conveyance or rural residential happens, you know, that residual farmland needs to have its own zone, so that it can't be done again. You know, I know the commission's looked at some of that in the last few years, where they've had property that's cycled back up, developers have attempted to do it again. My bigger concerns as a city resident, and as a investment, you know, got investment property and built it, and talked to developers all over the country, I travel for work, and I see all these problems, we're not the only ones with them. But at the end of the day, our roads were laid out 200 years ago for wagons and carriages. You go out west, and they've got 100-foot easements and eight-foot wide sidewalks, and it's a different place. These densities, as Steve referred to, you know, are more comparable to some of our surrounding towns. But if you take the R4 example, you know, that land use, it's at 16 units per acre, and we double that, that's, that's going to have impact on, you know, existing communities. And then we have five-story building that can be 10 feet off the property line, and with a, with, I think, a 10-foot rear yard. I mean, that, a five-story building can put some people's house in the shade all day long. And, I mean, I'm not talking out in the middle of nowhere, you know, we're talking Rose Hill, Waldridge Lane area, Macy Avenue, Virginia Avenue. I could go, if this were to pass as it's written, I could go out in Stonegate and buy a cul-de-sac worth of lots on Quail Run, back there at the end, all that zoned R4, every bit of it. They didn't build apartments back there, they built really nice houses. There's about 26 of them. But one of them burns down, well, hey, let's build, you know, six condos versus building a house back. I mean, six income streams are better for your investment property, that's a concern. You're going to change the fabric of communities. And although our existing ordinances aren't perfect, we're throwing the baby out with the bathwater to put in something that none of us understand. I mean, I've been reading this for three weeks, and the devil, I know, I knew how to try to weave my way through it. But this is a whole new deal. This is going to put a magnet for developers to come into our community, and I know we're endeavoring to create housing that every member of our community can afford, and we have a little bit of that. But there's places in this town where I'd be better to tear down my 30 apartments and build 60. Why wouldn't I? Those aren't going to be cheaper than what's there for rent right now. And that's a concern. You know, I think that we all want to make it more affordable, and we want our kids to be able to live here. It's a hard thing. I mean, most people I went to high school with don't live here, and it's same for every one of you that grew up here. You know, there's a very small percentage of us that get to live here. It's a privilege. But in an effort to make it more affordable or cheaper, I don't know if we realize that's something that's got to come from low-interest loans and government assistance on down payment.
Sorry.
As, well, I just ask, I'll submit this to the record and ask that you all take no action or.
Well, thank you, because I didn't have a key.
Yes, ma'am. I'm Vernon Azavito, and I reside at 150B, Runzy Circle in the city of Versailles. I'm speaking, and I have submitted in writing to register my reasons for opposition to the proposed revisions to Articles 2 and 7 of the zoning ordinance being considered by the planning commission. While these amendments appear to focus solely on land use metrics within the respective residential city-side zoning classification, their adoption represents an unacceptable risk to the public's health, safety, and welfare, and a profound change to the character and quality of life in Woodford County. Thus, I ask the need, why the need for these changes? What's the basis? The density and dimensional changes contained in these amendments cannot be reasonably explained and implemented without verified data confirming the need, and that the existing infrastructure can support the increased density and associated demand. No comprehensive growth study has been completed in coordination with the fiscal court, the city of Versailles, and the city of Midway to assess the cumulative impacts of increased growth and development density on government services, including schools, police, fire, emergency services, water and sanitary sewer infrastructure, stormwater infrastructure, traffic infrastructure, and parks. The proposed dimensional changes in lot size, roadway frontage, front, side, and rear yard requirements, combined with increased building heights, will fundamentally alter the character of our neighborhoods and negatively impact the quality of life in our community. The combined effects of decreased lot size, decreased yard setbacks, decreased roadway frontage, and increased building heights create an undesirable and overly cramped housing environment. This results in decreased privacy, diminished access to the natural environment, increased noise pollution, and a loss of community aesthetic appeal. There's no study or documentation to confirm that the current water distribution and sanitary sewer systems have the capacity to serve the increased population densities. Having a water line underground does not guarantee adequate pressure, domestic flow or fire flows in the area to be served. The same goes with sanitary sewer. Failure to consider these needs may result in the inability to meet prescribed and regulated levels of service, may cause health concerns, and ultimately will create a need for expensive system upgrades, the cost of which will be borne by existing customers. Increased density and decreased yard requirements inherently lead to a loss of permeable surfaces and an increase in runoff. There's been no study to document the potential impact on existing properties due to flooding and the associated costs to correct off-site, off-site improvements, off-site problems from the increased development density. No analysis has been completed to determine the capacity of the existing roadway network to absorb traffic increase that will result from allowing more lots per acre. Implementing these changes without a traffic study will inevitably lead to increased congestion, increased commute times, and compromised emergency vehicle access. Now, while the pursuit of affordable housing is a laudable goal, the Woodford County Housing Study dated September 2022 provides no quantitative amount of affordable housing that is needed in Woodford County. Nor does the study recommend any specific means to achieve affordable housing. There's no specific recommendation in that study that says the way to get affordable housing is through across-the-board dimensional text amendments. Policies and decisions of this magnitude must be driven by recommendations based upon solid data, not speculative claims or general assumptions. The proposed zoning text amendments constitute an ill-advised, premature, and potentially injurious course of action. The amendments prioritize theoretical development capacity over verified infrastructure capability and community impact. Let me repeat that statement. The amendments prioritize theoretical development capacity over verified infrastructure capability and community impact. One more paragraph, please. I ask again why the need for these changes, what will be accomplished with these changes, and I urge the planning commission to reject the proposed changes until full impact studies have been completed documenting that no negative impact on our community will occur with their implementation. I ask that the document be entered into the record, I've already submitted it to Ms. Perill, and thank you very much.
I just want to say I appreciate your all's time tonight to let me talk, and most of the things that others have said. My name is Mark Pearson, I live in Rose Ridge subdivision. Most of the things that's already been said is in my document, and I'm going to submit. But one thing I want to do is apologize, because this week, in the meeting with you and Steve out in the county this week was a real eye-opener for me. Because what I would like to do from now on, after living here 40 years, is get more engaged with what's going on in this county, in this city. I realize that this stuff's been going on, what you've been working on, Steve, for probably years. So I apologize for not being more engaged and this being a surprise to me. I also work in a community-related department at the University of Kentucky, which I talked to some faculty members this morning. And due to my thoughts spinning around this morning about all of this, I talked to them about maybe having some coursework where our students can get more engaged in some communities around the area, to where we, we impress upon them the importance to get involved and engaged and make this room this full every time you all have a meeting, which there would be no surprises, there would be no misinformation about a truck stop that I've seen on the internet all day today, which I'm like, where did that come from? Let's do a golf course instead. So I would just like to thank you all again and submit my document.
My name is Kathy Bachman, and I want to thank you all for your service and time, a lot of information, thank you. I went and got my hair cut today, and that is all everyone is talking about, is the truck stop. So I'm, it is a big factor, which made, I wrote about it, but really, when sitting here, you enlightened us, and I think that the public just doesn't know. And everybody gets alarmed, we see buildings, we see lots going on, and we just need more information from the public. I want to echo what Mr. Johnson said, we need the housing study completed, and we really need you to be out in the public to educate us all. So I just want to submit this as part of the document. Thank you for everything you do.
Hi, my name is Isabella Sheroles. I want to say thank you all so much for enduring everyone here today and listening to all of us with an open mind. I've recently become a Woodford County resident. I purchased a large home in June of this year, moved from Richmond, Kentucky, where we have these issues, and where the infrastructure was not there. And I will say, that was a huge factor in me moving to Versailles, not only for me to be closer to family on both sides of my fiancee and my family, but it's also because I had heard some really good things about Versailles. I heard that this was the city that stopped the Walmart. I had heard that this was a city where I could go and live like small-town America, and that's where I wanted to raise my family. I've heard that you guys have wonderful schools, Catholic schools, I've heard you have wonderful private schools, as well as the high school, where my fiancee went and graduated from Woodford County, and where we wanted to and chose to raise our future family. Some concerns that I have, I know a lot of times in this meeting, you had spoken about affordable housing. And I'm curious what your all's definition of affordable housing is. Is that homes under 250,000, are those condos, or are those apartments? Do you have a definition for that?
It's federal definition, 30% of your average household income.
30% of a household.
30% AMI is the federal definition of what's, and we have a gap analysis on the state website that shows the units we need. We have income levels of that 30% AMI, 50, 80, 100, plus 110. And we have definitions of household incomes. What we don't have is a definition of what unit types could be achieved. For example, if a family made $54,000, what can they get in? Is that a mortgage, is that a rent? That's what our housing study's going to attempt to do, is to try to target of those Woodford County AMI numbers, what unit types those kind of domino down to. So we do have a definition, and we are working on the housing study, we just entered into a contract with UK, but it's not going to be done until June, maybe, of next year. Our comp plan is kind of on hold till then, and we do have some pressing growth needs now, especially on the county side, so.
Okay. And with that, do you see with that housing study that that could be affected by what we're proposing today?
I don't know. We haven't worked through the scope yet, so.
Sorry, somebody asked what I asked. I asked, will the housing study potentially, once it comes out, affect what they're voting on today? That way, if we find out that the housing study, if we're, you know, overgrowing, or that we can't sustain the new homes that are being built, or the changes that are being made to these zones, if we would be able to come back and then have to do this all over again?
Yeah, I don't think that's the direction of the study. The study is simply to take the prior study you heard referenced, which was a broader study, drill down on our actual gap analysis, been identified by the state. We need 1,100, and I think 91 units today to meet the Affordable Housing Directive. Most of those are in that lower tier. There are the people that commute into this community every day, a lot of cops, firemen, me, I make better money than some folks, but the people can't afford to live here that do the lower-tier jobs, we know they're coming in here, we know they go home, and the idea is how do they end up living here and being part of our community, keep our job market solid? And we know those target incomes, we know the gap, but we don't know the unit types. We don't know if those are duplexes, or single-family, or townhomes, or apartments, or rents, or mortgages, or, we don't have that data. The study's going to try to get us there. And then once we get there, then we can identify if we even have the land, but just, you know, cheat line here, we're down to four parcels in this county, that's it. We don't have the land, actually, right now. The challenge we're going to have is, once we get this housing study, if the goal is to do something, the next challenge, we do not have the land.
But then that doesn't mean we're full, then.
Yeah.
Well.
Don't use the point when we're full.
Maybe we're full, but maybe we still have to try to achieve that objective somehow.
Okay.
So that's where the study's going, so I apologize.
Oh, it's okay, I appreciate you giving all that information.
Yeah, yeah, sorry about that.
So in addition to that, does that housing study, will it include what is to be proposed to be built, like the apartments off of Troy Park?
No.
Oh, it won't include that?
It's just getting down to the unit types needed by income level based on the federal definitions of affordable housing.
Okay. Did the proposed plan today, did it also include what is proposed to be built?
The proposed plan today?
So whenever, there was a slide that you had, and it was discussing, like, how many more homes we've been building?
Oh, yeah.
Does that include what is already in place to be built?
That was just county-side construction. Everything that's city-side is about 1,700 units, they're already zoned, they're already committed, they're already deed-restricted, they're already in progress. We know those are coming, so, yeah.
Thank you guys so much for your time, I appreciate it.
I'll talk to you after the meeting if you want to.
I would love to, thank you.
Yeah, I'll get you my card.
My name, my name is Ann Bocky. My husband Moe and I own 60 acres down near Nunca. I was part of the group that met with Steve for a long meeting. He showed us all this and said that he would briefly highlight it. And two hours later, he did answer a lot of questions. I'm here to support the text amendments related to seriously reducing the destruction of farm property by making it into residential through new subdivisions in farmland and through in-family conveyance. I've been thinking about this for a long time. The other day, I got on the PVA map, and I looked at our farm, how many acres we had. I looked. I looked at the neighboring farms that touch our farm, how many acres they had. I looked at the neighboring farms to the neighboring farms, how much land they had. I came up with seven farm owners in my area. The land sizes ranged from seven acres to 107 acres and in aggregate, seven farm owners owned 435 contiguous acres. Now, I know these folks. Some are great friends, some I know to wave to as I drive by, but I'm an observant, I'm not saying nosy individual, and I know that six of those seven properties are not owned by full-time farmers. They're owned by part-time farmers and hobbyists. There's one farm that's trying to full-time board Thoroughbred Maris, and I think that is a legitimate full-time farming activity. We have five cows, six horses, raise a little hay, feed all the neighbors' cats. My next-door neighbor leases some pasture and grows some garlic. The guy just over this hill has a bunch of donkeys because I hear him talking all the time. We're not farmers. We're conservationists. We're preservationists. Of these seven farm owners, one of them, I believe, grew up on his farm or inherited his farm. The other six of us came with money that we earned someplace else, loved this land, paid the going rate, followed the zoning rules, and our intent is to love the land, enjoy the land, live on the land, and keep the land. Understand the purpose of in-family conveyance, but I believe that that's a policy that served the old guard. I heard someone earlier today say he was a fifth-generation farmer, landowner. I'm a first-generation Woodford Kentuckian and so are these six other landowners. I like to call us the new Woodford Countyans, and we don't want this land divided up further. I support the new policies shown in this policy. I don't think we need to divide up our land anymore. I think there are a substantial number of people just like myself who want to preserve the county. I commend you. Once Steve was done talking, I realized this was only half of what he had to say tonight. I commend you for all the work that you're doing on it and all the work that's been done heretofore that apparently we've not realized is going on. But I beseech you to look carefully at things that are going to preserve our farmland. Thank you.
My name's Lori Garkovich and I live on McCoun Spray Road and I've been here, I think, most of your meetings on this issue. I reached, I think, I'm very concerned now because I thought at last we were finally going to stop the drip, drip, drip loss of agricultural land. And then suddenly the gets combined into this issue around what's going to happen in the cities. I don't mind. I'm worried, I mean, I worry about that too, but the issue is, is that once the land in the agricultural areas is gone, it is gone. It does not go back. And so I once again beg you, and I even have a quote for this. Someone said that in a moment of great decision, the best thing to do is the right thing to do, the worst thing to do is nothing. And I want to plead with you to make sure that we do something about the article, components of this, these two sections articles that deal with agricultural land. The land within this urban services area is already designated for urban services development. We can talk about how that, the land that's out there, we know how many we ate parcels we have created while we have waited two and a half years. And bless your hearts, you guys, two and a half years ago, approved the changes and sent it on to the fiscal court. And they were the ones who said, oh, no, we don't want to do that because we want to deal with this issue in-family conveyance. So we spent the next two years, two and a half years, piddling with that idea. And in the interim, we keep losing land. And my concern is, is if nothing else, separate these two-ish parts of out if we can and make it happen. Thank you.
I won't repeat a lot that has been said. I'm a native Woodford Countyan and lived in Starbridge One for over 40 years. So I want to thank each and every one of you for serving on this commission. It's, I know it's laborsome and I commend you for doing so. But I would just like to echo what Joe Johnson mentioned, the fact that I would suggest and recommend that you table this, these proposed vote on these amendments until we can have a meeting here in the city with Steve and Patty and answer some questions that a lot of us need to learn more about. I've learned a great deal tonight. But also, I think it would be hoove you all to wait until this housing study is completed before you go any further. So I thank you very much for your time and patience this evening, and I'd like to submit this into the record, please.
Good evening. I'm Debbie Tichner and I live on Clifton Road. I've lived here in the county for 20 years and I just want to echo a little bit about what Lori said in preserving our land. I think we've said that several times here, but as we plan these developments and convenience stores and we're so quick to clear our lands and, oh, we'll let you just 100 feet of fence line, but in that 100 feet of fence line, you've lost native trees and habitat for winter migrating birds, for spring, the birds that come back in the spring to spend the summer. A little field mouse that would feed a hawk that lives in a little area, its entire life this big, its whole habitat has been wiped out. So from the field mouse to our birds of prey, to our migrating birds, our native birds, our native trees, our native oaks that support hundreds of insects that feed one little clutch of chickadees. It takes 10,000 insects to feed one clutch of chickadees. So that 100 feet of fence line could support many families of our wildlife. I keep hearing a lot about people, but I never hear anybody say, our plan to replant our trees or how are we going to protect our ecosystem in the county? No one has worked that in to any development that I've heard tonight and what we're going to try to do to protect that. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sonya Lamb. Thank you all for all the good information that you've shared with us today and thank you all for standing up and talking about what I should love the most. So when my husband and I looked to build a home in 1998, we carefully selected Woodford County. And the thing that I love the most about it was the green spaces. So I'm going to kind of echo some of this that the others have shared about that. And I thought, you know, there are so many horse farms around here and there's so many, you know, farms and all that, that it's going to stay like that. Well, you know, our son was born over there in the hospital. We raised our children. They've married and one's in the military, one's off and doing that. And it makes me sad to think that my son, who is serving right now in the military, would come back and not recognize his hometown. So please save our green spaces. That's what I wanted to share tonight. Thank you for your time.
Can I just say something?
Yes, Ms. Cox. Go right in.
I don't know how you got here tonight, other than we saw, a bunch of us saw, truck stop. And we immediately started saying, what? We've not heard anything about, anything about this. And I just, I would just, I'm born and raised here, been here 88 years. And so, I mean, you know, I love it. It's my home. I love all of you that have just come in here and that you love it too, but come on, let's work together. I enjoy, somebody here tonight said, you need to come to fiscal court meeting every time they meet. You do. I'm sorry. I know. I know. You say another meeting or whatever. You also need to go to the city council meeting every time they meet. That's the only way because communication, you're going to get bad communication off of Facebook. You found that out, didn't you? I mean, that's not the people that, that we want to, we want them to be here, don't get me wrong, but, but let's, come on, folks. Let's keep our Woodford County what I remember it being, coming up with being born and raised on farm and seeing them just here, but, you know, it's just, it's heartbreaking to see that we may put, what Debbie didn't tell you, that another thing that really upset us this week and got us kind of started on this aside from seeing truck stop was the what all is going on in that corner already out there across, off of the bypass, where it's just been cleared, everything just wiped out. If you went out that way, past the cemetery, past the school, past the cemetery and, and on out and you look and you stop at the light before you go on to the curbside, look on that hill. I used to go out there and get wildflowers to use for decorations on my tables if I was doing something for us. I mean, come on. We didn't even know that it was going to be clear. Had no idea. I go to the top of Rose Ridge Cemetery, to the top of the hill. My husband's buried out there and I will be soon. But the top of the hill, you got to do is drive up there, look out towards Southside School, look out toward the, whatever that type of vision is out there, what are all those houses being built out there? And the bulldozers are sitting right there, ready to do more any chance. And there's all kinds of problems with it already. Come on, let's, let's get together. Let's, let's care about Woodford County as all Woodford Countyans. And I'm sorry if I started this, but it's okay.
You don't got to say your quacker because I'm going to be like 30 seconds. My name's Shannon Corbett and I just was like, wanted to say, oh, my God, I learned so much from this community today and you were so amazing with your information. It was hard to understand because I don't understand all the zoning, but thank you because that was so informative and thank you to you guys because it can't be an easy job, but it was pretty great just listening to our community. And I've come to a few of these meetings when something significant popped up, but you're right, I'm going to listen to you because it is important. And the gentleman that started talking today, when he said, get our kids coming from the high school, we need to. It should be a requirement when kids are in some of their courses. It should be a requirement one of the years to come because, man, like, nobody was teaching me in high school and as an adult, I wish I'd been doing it more. So thank you to our community because, man, y'all got some great ideas and some people are so smart and so informed and, yeah, thank you, thank you, thank you. That was awesome. And I love how excited they're like, people are so passionate about Woodford. Anyone else? Sure.
Thank you. Got here late. Apparently missed a great presentation, Steve, and a lot of other good information. I'm not going to add a whole lot to it. I'll just be brief. My name's David Crapp. I live in Starbridge. I've lived in Versailles now for 34 years, something on that line. My topic is a formal objection to the specific revisions to Articles Two, Seven, Eight, and Ten of the zoning ordinances as proposed. First and foremost, I do want to thank everyone here for all the hard work and commitment to the community and commission. It can't be an easy job. I respectfully want to formally oppose those articles I just mentioned. Specifically, I'm very concerned about some of these points I'm going to read off of proposed, as proposed, these changes in the 117 pages, I think, would be a comprehensive and significant change to the existing articles. I'm not saying there's bad stuff throughout or questionable stuff, but the responsible parties, gluteing yourselves, planning zoning commission, the cities of Versailles, Midway, Woodford County Fiscal Court must have more time to review, absorb, and consider these changes. Comprehensive plan update is well underway. Would be me far more logical to delay taking up the proposed changes until after the comprehensive plan is updated. And the commission has also recently engaged the consultant to produce the housing study we're talking about. And the timing of that and the changing of the proposed changes of the zoning ordinances to me is very poor. In addition to the completion of the comprehensive plan update, this housing study needs to be completed before taking on major revisions to the zoning ordinances, ordinances specifically for the city and the housing development sections. Community at large needs to be educated, made aware of the proposed changes, and I highly recommend a series of public forums to engage, inform, and discuss the proposal with the community before taking any further action. I also want to submit that the process and manner with which the changes have been developed to me is questionable. Based on committee makeup and how they're developed, the process is followed, there could be some competing interests and some conflict of interest involved in all this. After my review of the proposed amendments, I'm very, very concerned about the many sweeping changes to increase lot density and size of the buildings permitted in the various categories. Just one quick example is in Section 710, the high-density R4 section, which is Section 710.6. It doubles the allowable density of units on one acre from 16 to 32, and there are many, many more examples. You all know this, I don't need to repeat it. There's also permissive language about adding overnight truck stops and RV parks, et cetera. Apparently I missed that part of the meeting. In closing, planning zoning changes are a community-wide decision. Appreciate you all getting the ball rolling, but we can best determine what our collective future is with the county and what the city will look like through this education and public engagement, which I didn't know about the presentation the other night, but I think we need a lot more of that. In order to do this, we must have a robust dialogue with the community at large and with our respective elected officials. I therefore respectfully request the commission to reject the proposed amendments, the numbers I just mentioned, all the Roman numerals, and I'll submit this for the record. Thank you.
My name's Helen Ranch. I live in Midway and I just want to build on what Lori Garkovich had suggested, and that is to ask if it's possible and if so, what would be the procedure to separate the county issues from the city issues at this meeting?
Well, that's something we have to discuss among ourselves.
Okay. So I would like for you to consider it when you have time.
My name's Russ Witt and I live here in the city of Versailles. One thing that's came sort of obvious to me tonight, Steve's meeting the other night too, and that there's been a lot of work done on the county side. There's a lot of things that need to be put in place, I think, that are very good. There's a lot of things that need to be put in place, I think, that are very good. On the city side, we have a lot of concerns and a lot of studies. I know the, wherever you've taken this, district court has kicked it back to you guys several times. I hate to see the work that's been done on the county side get held up by the city side. Is there, by record, is there any way to get this separated, get the county stuff in place? Because I think Steve and Cor, there's 30 more homes every year, lots going up. We need to go ahead, you guys have been working on that for a couple of years, we need to get that county side. And then the studies that everybody's asked for the city, I think there's all legitimate concerns that really need to be addressed and looked at before we proceed with the city. I think putting these two together is what's causing the problem. I hate to see the county be held up. So, I don't know if there's, you know, if you go to the district court and say, "The city wants it done this way, the people of the county want it separated and taken care of." Just a, a thought to see if there's some way, because I hate to see the county get held up any longer. That's all I have, this, thank you.
Anyone else? No one? Okay, this is gonna be the final closing on the public hearing. No one else? Okay, hearing's closed. Okay, commissioners? Yes. Please, we'll take a five-minute break.
I'm kinda stretching.
Okay guys, we're gonna try to get the meeting back together.
Okay, okay. We still got a whole lot of stuff to do.
Yeah.
And it's after nine o'clock.
Oh lord.
So let's, commissioners, the public hearing's been closed. Let's talk about what your pleasure is.
Is there any possibility to do that separation? Sorry, is there any possibility to do that?
Sep- yeah.
Separating two to seven, basically?
It- 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 well, it's split seven.
It's split seven?
Yeah. I could see, I'll just say, chapter two's all definitions. And they don't really affect a ton of stuff. I mean, I could see two going forward and everyone get these definitions ironed out. They're not usable to really make all the corrections in seven, but they'd be in the book. Or you can do them later. Seven, what some of the folks are saying is move the county side zones forward. Pause on the city side zones. But the problem is, the cities need to approve the same thing. I mean, we don't just have a county amendment. Everyone's got their own book. If we sent, let's say we decide to, let's approve pages seven dash one through seven dash... Let me go where that would be. Through the A four zone. So seven dash one through seven dash thirty-three. That actually needs to go to Midway and Versailles too, because everyone's gotta get their books in line. Or we are gonna have mixed up ordinances, different page numbers. So the planning commission could say, let's adopt pages seven dash one through thirty-three. Shoot it out to the governments. What we did last time, let the fiscal court go first, see where they land. Because we asked the two cities to hold. We sent the text amendment to all three governments when we did county side. We let the county go first. They ended up punting it and the cities just tossed it in the trash can. There's no reason to adopt it, because, you know, they weren't really best at it. But we gotta get all the governments to get this ordinances matching, or we're gonna have a nightmare if we all got different rules.
I get that. I guess I was just thinking about the possibility of... I mean, there's a symbolic moment here. First of all, we've been talking about the county stuff for...
Two years.
Two years.
Yeah.
Right? And some of this other stuff, not as long.
Yeah.
So there's that symbolic moment. I feel like there's a lot of people from the county have come and said to us, let's get this done.
Sure.
So there is a symbolic moment and it kind of sends that message out. And I understand the technical difficulties and, you know, at the very least, I mean, if we table, if we were hypothetically to table everything, we're tabling the county part again. That means that hearing is still open.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yes.
Technically? I mean, I'm just looking for a way to close the hearing on the county side and...
I think it's possible.
Say, we like this, even if it's just, even if it's just our own internal housekeeping.
It- it, we debated this in the advisory committee at length. Do we send one page? Do we send just the county? The city's been saying, hey, what about our stuff? These are more a straight directive city side. You know, we didn't change anything. Some of the folks want us to maybe debate, I mean, this, some of this is more maybe a discussion they need to have with the city council.
Yeah, I know. That's another topic. Let's go to...
Yeah, so, so I'm kinda, I think we could do that. I'm not sure about doing nothing to the housing studies done. We're talking seven, eight months down the road. Comp plan could take another two years. It's just, it's just, it's a lot of work. So we can't pause on all this stuff. There's some housekeeping items, for example, in seven. I mean, it sounds like the residential stuff is problematic, but for example, the fix we made in industrial zone, I don't think anyone has an issue with. And there's some time sensitive stuff in there. Um, there's some time sensitive stuff in the B two zone that would be good to get cleaned up. So that's where I'm struggling a little bit is, you know, do we just do the county side and wait and two years from now we get the industrial stuff fixed? I mean, it sounds like the residential's causing most people to hurt.
Do we change his, I mean, I don't, I can't remember. Do we change his own ordinance from time to time, little pieces of it?
Yeah, sense of the time, sure we do, yeah.
So, so in a sense, this is just a little bit larger piece of...
Just a more, yeah, bigger house.
I know it's a headache and it's a hassle.
Well, and the page number's gotta match and you know how...
Well, yes, I'm pushing mostly for the in-family thing.
I think we could do the county side zones. Very similar to what we did last time and see, see what happens. And just to remind everyone, when we sent the county the last text amendment, they spent four months before they got to the position they were comfortable to make a directive. Perfect world, we would've got that moratorium way back whenever and we could've worked on the comp plan and everything would've been paused. Um, but without a commitment like that, we're just, we just have to deal with what happens in there. You know, I think it's possible. Henry, what do you think? I mean...
I do think it's possible. Um, it seems to me like there could be a unified book rather than each jurisdiction having their own, but that's something that predates me and possibly you as well. So I, I think you can split it out, yes.
Yeah. We just have to make sure they all take the same kind of action.
There are always gonna be those little things.
Yeah.
The residential stuff we've had in Versailles for years, CBDs, so...
Well, and I'll tell you, big picture, just to be honest with you. This directive came from Versailles on the R zones. There's a good chance we could take that to Midway. We're not changing anything. So the book will be different. Versailles will have these rules, Midway will have these rules. The county side rules are really the county, it's kind of, it's more about the magistrates, because once we take those to Midway, what are they gonna care about the A four zone? They don't have any.
They care.
Well, they care. There's no jurisdictional issues there.
I agree.
They'll say, well, the county wants that, we'll just put that in our book. So very similar to what we did with the floodplain stuff the last couple of months. It was more county side stuff and now all the amendments have ratified it as of yesterday, so...
What do you think?
I don't see an issue with splitting it. I mean, I know it's a headache and it causes problems, but I don't see a problem with splitting it.
The other thing I would possibly hope is if we do split it and we're gonna debate this R section, you know, this is a formal public hearing, you guys are evidentiary type board, you're fact finding. I really think if we're, what we might do then is recommit the rest of it back to the advisory committee and let the advisory committee interact with the community. Maybe have some meetings and there'd be some free debate, because this is more a public hearing on an actual draft. And like for, like, if right now we all decided, hey, let's change that density from thirty-two to thirty-one, we're advertising a certain draft, we're in a public hearing. I mean, to go back and just wordsmith and freethink through the rest of the pages, that really should be at the advisory committee or with the city council or invite some council members to join our, which we've done in advisory committee.
So what if we did the advisory committee and notified, I know the Woodford Sun doesn't reach everybody, but I mean, obviously there's key figures in here this evening or that have been here this evening that can spread the word pretty dark.
Can we livestream those meetings?
Maybe that's how we get people.
So, I mean, that may be what we could do is we could adopt a portion of seven and send the rest of it back to advisory committee to then sit there, kind of waiting as we work through some community outreach stuff and discussion. And if all of a sudden we decide we're gonna mend the paragraph, it'd be the advisory committee would need to sign off on that anyhow, as a procedure. And then when we're ready, we bring the rest of the book back to this body for a formal hearing. The other part I'm thinking is, you know, this was a directive from the city and really this community discussion really should be with the city. And I could see us, I know it sounds a little, probably what the neighbors don't wanna hear, but we could adopt it and send it to the city and let them discuss with the city. City doesn't have to pass it and this whole discussion really should be involved with the council. I mean, we got a directive here and we didn't make these decisions. Well, Chris and I were on the task force. Um, I was really described, I wasn't even a voting member on there, but there was a pretty large group of people and then it went to the city council and that's how this dominoed down to what we have. I think it's tough if you all even tweak some of that, because we really didn't need to bounce back to the city and get their buy-in. So, you know, this may be something that this...
So maybe for a change, instead of the county and city throwing stuff back to us, we could throw something back to them.
And then if they don't adopt it, they don't adopt it and then the community could, this could be, city council could have a work session. I don't know, there's one council member here, but, I mean, I think they expect us to do the heavy lifting on kind of the edit and the format and...
Which we, which you've done.
In the evidentiary part where people come, build a record, then we forward to them. That's our role is to have the hearing in a fair manner and then send them a recommendations. That's all we do. And then they make the decision, not us. So I don't know, but I think it could work either way.
So if we went ahead and sent it to the city and they had meetings and so forth and they rejected it, then they simply send it back here?
They would.
And we tweak it again?
Or if the city says, you know what, the neighbors are right, let's make the density sixty units today. I'm just kidding. They could just change it right there.
They could change it right there.
They're the ones that passed the law. We're just making a recommendation on text amendment. They had, they're under no time limit. They can take action, take no action. That's what the governments do on the text amendment. But I also understand, it sounds a little bit disingenuous maybe, because the folks are asking for more time. They've just seen it. And historically, we like to accommodate people and make sure they have time.
I was gonna say, that's the point I would like...
We don't rush things.
I would not like to be...
We literally, every text amendment, we have introduced them and let them sit month after month. We've let this one sit seven months. And I, again, I don't know why no one saw it till now. It's been on the website every time. We livestream all our meetings. Our agendas are online. I don't know what happened. So, I'm good with whatever y'all wanna do. It's not gonna hurt us one way or the other. I'm not sure about meeting with all these neighbors at Simmons with no backup or anything.
We had a very civil...
I'm just kidding.
Simmons...
Hundred plus?
It was a hundred plus people at Simmons with jihad. It was very civil and respectful to every all parts.
He's literally hiding somewhere right now, scared to death of the cat knocking.
So at least now we know how to get the community's attention. So if y'all see some silly term on Facebook, just know it's probably not...
I just gotta ask where the TJ Maxx is going.
We're just getting your attention.
All the way. So, yeah, I'm good with whatever y'all wanna do. We'll, we'll work around whatever the pleasure of the planning commission...
Personally, I, I'm Midway. I'm a Midway person. So in my mind, I'm splitting out the county stuff from this, what seems to be the Versailles stuff. Even if it's gonna go to everybody I know this. And I would like to start with the county stuff and perhaps move that we take a vote and if that to adopt or not that this evening. And I'm not sure how exactly I do that, Henry might have... It would be the, it would be simply...
References the page numbers, yeah.
That's the easiest way, page numbers. And while you're doing that, Article two as well, or just the...
Two is tricky, because it's got some city side stuff and we're under a time crunch on the manufactured homes. That's the other part. That's going into the law and we need it in our book. It's not debatable at this point. That's all in the city side stuff and it's in Article two.
When's the housing study due?
Yeah.
What's that?
When's the housing study due?
June next year, if it stays on.
Do we have to have the manufactured homes?
It goes into effect July one.
July, okay.
And, you know, to get a text amendment through the process takes several months, two readings, discussion. Um, it'll be a challenge to get our books in line by July. If we don't, we gotta follow the law anyhow. It just won't be the book. So if someone comes in July second, I'm putting manufactured homes on High Street, it's going in. We can't stop it. So it's gonna be law. But we really need to get our books ironed out and, um... So two's problematic, because the definitions are spread out. But, but in two is where we delete the tourist destination verbiage. You know, if we're making those fixes in seven, we got a whole bunch of parallel things in two that have to be fixed also. So maybe we, maybe go forward with the definitions. They're fairly straightforward. And then you do part of Article seven. And then we come back and do the rest of seven some other day. After we have meetings with folks and, you know, whatever.
Could you just do the A ones? Just the A ones?
Well, we could do the A one, but the problem is that the challenge that in-family is it's being struck out of the A two, the CO. It's not gonna be broad in every county side. It just now goes to one zone. And there's cross-references in those other zones. The RR product needs to be addressed. So really, we need to do all the county side zones to fix the cross-references. And if we go this route with the in-family, we're actually taking away the options in the CO zone, A four zone. So there's housekeeping there too, that kind of all dovetail together. So we really do need to do all the county side zones, would be A one, A two.
Do it all one time, all county?
CO in the...
I'd be curious to see how the rest of the commissioners feel about this.
I had a little conflict with the R one densities that we talked about, so that sort of concerned me. But I don't think we can wait until June or July next year to complete some of the things we've already talked about, we know we need to get done. The split sounds fine. If we can split it and get those things, you know, done, I think it's okay.
Take part of the load off of us.
Yeah.
Take part of the load off, you know, get that part out there. Then you can concentrate more towards the city side.
Whatever we need to do.
I'm separating seven.
No, there's...
And all of two.
To be clear, to the gentleman's question, he asked if we could do just the A one. You responded, no, we have to do these others, but that still stops short of what was the subject of most discussion tonight, those residential zones will not be part of, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Steve, a couple of things.
Yeah.
The residential changes on the city side, those come from a task force that was primarily the elected city leaders?
Uh, there were three elected leaders on it. Several agencies, citizens, bankers, developers, school. Um, I was ex-officio, Chris was on, realtors. Um, yeah, I was in the housing affordability task force and they came up with the, and someone from the manufactured home industry, someone from the... The gentleman from the Kentucky Realtor, Todd? Kentucky Home Builders were on it.
And those changes...
Habitat, I'm sorry, there was a ton of people on it.
And those changes were a consensus that come out of that task force?
They were a consensus. And then they went to the city council and they voted on them in a form of resolution and gave us a directive, yes.
Okay.
That's how it...
Those specific numbers with the, with the plot changes?
Hundred percent, yeah.
And, and one thing that I've heard that, that I just wanna clarify. I, there's, there's been some insinuation that we act in secrecy. We have had multiple meetings where we have discussed these.
At least, at least four or five hours worth, at the advisory committee level, yes, at our committee level.
And then, and then we put, we put off the public hearing on this a couple of months, but we, it's because it's been on the agenda before.
It's been on the agenda since September.
Okay. Because the, the indication that last minute or that this come out of the woodwork is just not, I don't believe that's accurate. And I just wanna clarify that.
Yeah. It went on the agenda, I believe, on September fourth. Um, the county side stuff's been on the agenda and on the website since first of May, something like that.
The last time we had a full house, wasn't it on, wasn't it on the agenda? And we decided to pass it on and give you a... We were upstairs.
That's our, that's our last idea.
You don't have to turn off the attention, because it's on social media. Like, everybody looks at social media. I wish we had a Facebook page for our government.
We do.
We do.
It's the title versus...
Planning Commission.
Uh, hearings, the four hearings.
Yeah, hold on, hold on one second. So that they can see it. Kim, do you... There's the website. You guys are, wanna get on it, it's onewordwoodfordplanning.org. Uh, everything's on it, right on the homepage. There's our YouTube link, Facebook link. And the text amendments on the homepage, the meeting dates, the agendas. Text amendment's been right there on the homepage every day since May. Um, the prior text amendment, twenty, everything's right on the homepage. Click the article and you're on the document. So that's where, that's where it lives. And that's where we'll keep all the information on the meetings, the committee meetings. Go there, comp plan meetings, right there on the homepage. And then you can go to the Facebook page, YouTube, whatever you want. I wouldn't rely on voices of Versailles, I wouldn't rely on neighborhooders.
Voices of Versailles too. I would go to...
You've been kicked off of regular voice here.
There's what's happening. Every single, we manage four different boards. We have lots of different meetings, lots of different responsibility. There's all our meetings, all our agendas are on there every single month before the meeting. So everything's right there. But yeah, whatever you guys wanna do, or move on till December, whatever we do.
So if you...
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Can we get Steve back?
Okay, Rich had a question for you.
So, I'm sorry.
So I, I'm still prepared to make a motion. If you could help me with the page numbers.
Yes, I can do that.
Nine through thirty.
So it'd be...
Article two, the article two.
And it would be Article seven, pages seven dash one through seven dash thirty-three. But we also have to strike that conservation verbiage at the very end. So it'd be seven dash one through seven dash thirty. In addition, it would be seven dash eighty-seven through seven dash eighty-nine. Because we're moving the conservation up and we're deleting that at the end of the book.
And I hope everybody in this room appreciates the fact that he could do that in fifteen seconds.
All right.
That's my motion.
So you've made the motion?
Yeah, Article two and seven one through seven dash thirty and seven eighty-seven.
Thirty-three.
It's my own writing, late. And seven eighty-seven to seven eighty-nine.
Let me throw a little kink in it real quick. Um, because there's one other kind of problem here, but we'll, we'll solve it right now. Let me get to my document, or let me go back to this. The other change we need to make is on that seven dash one page. Oh, shoot, I gotta go here. If we're, if we're putting all the city side stuff kind of on hold, let me get to the text amendment again, I'm sorry. I'm gonna get to the text amendment right here. The other, the other challenge we have, Rich, is this seven dash one that's up on the screen. It references that new R one D zone. That needs to be struck from that page also. So we, technically, it's, it's pages seven dash one through seven dash thirty-three, but we need to delete that R one D zone, because that's not happening at this time.
So we would add it back in?
Single family.
We would. That's why it's number seven oh seven B.
Just take that out.
We gotta take that out, because that goes with the city side stuff.
All right, that's, that's more...
And then we also are making an end. So we're fixing what you see kind of in that...
Seven, what was it?
Seven oh seven.
R one D.
Strike the seven oh seven B section reference.
For the purposes of this motion.
Yes. Yes, okay.
Okay, I have a, I have a motion on the table. Do you all, if y'all got that motion down, you know what it is. Do I have a second?
I second it.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, because the statute asks us to submit the recommendation with reasons justifying, I would say the director presented extensive evidence and cited comp plan preservationist and agricultural goals to justify revisions to in-family conveyance provision amendments.
Can I get with that? Any discussion on the matter? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
I'm satisfied with the city.
I'm fine.
Yes.
Are there something to be said for sending it back to the...
Technically, it didn't. We, we sent forward a recommendation based on a limited part of it. And so that, it just kind of goes away until it comes back again.
Should we, we send that back to the advisory committee formally?
As much as we can express our intention and give a clear message, yes.
I think...
Hey, guys, we got a couple more things.
Yeah, we still got a meeting to go through here, if you all don't mind to...
Yeah, 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 I know, I know.
Take your conversations out.
It's fine. Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Steve.
No, that's, that's all I'm saying. I don't know.
But what do we...
Just held, or is it tabled, is it...
Do we ta...
Probably send it back to the advisory committee.
Go either way. We could table it. I wonder if there's an expectation that it's gonna be heard again next month, or...
Well, to table it means we're advertising it.
Right.
And there's an expectation it's coming back, but it's not coming back until we kind of work through...
Could it not be a new hearing?
Yes, I think it...
I think it will be a new hearing.
Well, too.
And if we wait on the housing state, for example, it might be till next summer, so I'd hate to table it and just be on the agenda every month, like we're getting ready to do something.
So what?
I'd say we maybe just formally send the rest of the document back to the advisory committee and we'll just figure out when we're gonna get on it after we do some...
And we could have a motion to that effect, yeah?
Yeah, yeah.
Chris, that wasn't fair.
Because otherwise, it's just hanging there.
It's just right now, though, yeah.
So I, so I, I'll move that we take what's left of this evening's conversation and send it back to the advisory committee.
Can I have a motion to send the residential and the other back?
Second motion.
I'll second, oh, yeah.
Second. Any discussion on it? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? All right.
Yeah.
Moving on to the bill pay list for November twenty-five in the financing budget report. Any questions on any of that? Construction surety's report, you have that? Any announcements?
Well, we might announce next month, December eleventh is planning commission meeting and it'll be the last meeting of our chair. If the term comes soon and we are pl... Kim, go ahead. Why don't you just say what, how the day's gonna unfold, make sure everyone, or just tell them where we're gonna...
My intention was to have the meeting and at the end of the meeting, say, this is it, I'm done. Play it's not gonna work that well.
We're gonna have, we're gonna try to get together...
We're gonna have a small reception for...
Very soon.
Five o'clock.
What date is that?
And she has to attend.
December, next, the next meeting?
December though.
December, the next meeting?
December eleventh.
Eleventh, fail, December eleventh.
Eleven, or the planning commission meeting, five o'clock.
About five o'clock.
Together, we're set.
Oh, Lord.
And we haven't, if there's no other announcements, we need a motion to adjourn.
Oh.
So moved.
I think Floyd won.
Aye.